I'd like to call to order the October 8, 2018 Planning Board Meeting. At this time, I would ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, in accordance with the State Government Ethics Act, it's the duty of every Planning Board member to avoid conflicts of interest. Does any Planning Board member have any known conflict of interest with respect to any matters coming before the Board today?
No.
All right. We do have a quorum. The agenda, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve, the agenda is written.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All minutes, are there any changes to the August 14, 2018 minutes?
Motion to approve, the minutes is written.
Second?
I second.
All approved, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. I don't believe we have any old business. All right, new business. For each case that's presented to the Planning Board, the following are the speaker time limitations. The applicant and persons in support of the request have a total of 20 minutes to present their proposal and make comments. Persons in opposition of the request have a total of 20 minutes to make comments. The applicant has a total of five minutes for rebuttal. All right, let's get on with the first one. Let's, anyone that wants to speak before the Board, if you could sign up on the sheet up front. Has everybody, has everybody had a chance to sign up? Great. And what I'll do is normally I announce this ahead of time and I have people come up, but in the interest of saving time, what I'm going to do is as you approach the podium, just state your name and where you're from and then we'll move on from there. All right, the first agenda item is PB 1821, the Grouse Text Amendment, and that's Jenny Turner is going to present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request by Stephen and Rachel Grouse to amend the Unified Development Ordinance Sections 4.4.2 and 4.4.6 to allow temporary residences during construction of new dwellings. Currently, we allow this use for temporary residence along with an existing dwelling. Let's say if you're displaced from an existing dwelling by fire, or if you're doing a large addition, you can live in a temporary residence while you're doing that work. But we do not allow that for vacant lots. That provision actually was changed in 2013 with the rewrite of the UDO, and planning staff that was involved in that rewrite recalls discussions, and that being a point of discussion, and ultimately, that provision was removed from the ordinance at that time. Staff has reviewed permits that were issued for temporary residences from 2005 through the end of August 2018. Six permits were issued. One of those was for a temporary residence for new construction, and that was in 2010. Four of those permits were for use during repair of a fire damaged structure, and one permit was used while the property was being razed. It was a flood prone structure. Staff also reviewed other coastal North Carolina communities ordinances to determine a common practice and found that Deere, Pasquotank, Perquimans, Brunswick, Pender, and New Hannover Counties prohibit the use of a temporary residence for new construction. Camden, Carteret, and Chawan County allow the use subject to restrictions of time and some other provisions. The UDO requires that the Board adopt a statement of consistency and reasonableness that describes whether the decision on the text amendment is consistent with county adopted plans, and also describes why the decision is reasonable and in the public interest. Staff recommends denial of the text amendment because the request is inconsistent with Goal 7 of the land use plan, which is to exercise caution, foresight, and common sense in dealing with the risks of coastal development, because temporary residents are not as safe of a use as permanent dwellings, and by continuing to limit the number of those allowable temporary residences, the county will exercise caution by reducing the number of dwellings subject to a higher risk. Also, staff determine that, or feels that, the use of a temporary residence for new construction is not a necessary use. It is reasonable and in the public interest to allow temporary residence in the case of an established dwelling where the occupants are temporarily displaced, in the instance of the fire or flood prone structure. It is not reasonable and in the public interest to allow the use of a temporary residence when it is not necessary. We also are currently experiencing an increase in building permits, and there's a greater potential to result in more temporary residence permits for new construction. Additionally, staff suggests that the request is not in the public interest as evidenced by the lack of permits that were issued over that eight-year period when this use was allowed. There was one permit issued for temporary residence during that period. So staff does recommend denial of the text amendment due to its inconsistency with the land use plan, and because it is not reasonable and in the public interest. In your memo, staff did provide potential consideration if the Planning Board does want to recommend adoption of this ordinance. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Turner, I appreciate it. And do we have someone speaking on behalf of the proposed text, or proposed amendment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Steve Grouse. Certainly appreciate the time the county, uh...
Name and address.
Steve Grouse, Carova, 2195 Ocean Pearl Carova.
Right, thank you.
Certainly appreciate the time and the effort the county put into their recommendation. I would have to respectfully disagree on a couple of points. Try and make it as quick as possible. While she says temporary residents are not as safe as permanent dwellings, in point of fact, in 2003 and 2004, when we built our current residence, we actually availed ourselves to that provision, and we did. We had a 30-foot RV anchored with mobile home anchors, and it survived Hurricane Isabel with no damage. And we were much more exposed on that lot than we are in our current one, that we're building our new primary residence. Also, you know, the county denying the use of a temporary residence unless it's absolutely necessary, I think that's kind of a matter of opinion. To us, yes, we feel it's necessary. We've already had some theft from our property, seeing as we're not able to be there. There are several instances where current county residences with established businesses like myself and construction that don't want to relocate off the beach may need to use this. One would be if we sold our home before our new home was ready, then we'd have to rent a house. And I'm sure all of you know the rental prices out there are ridiculous. Even if you find one, it's only going to be seasonable for a couple of months. Some people may be renting, and if their agreement comes up and they can't go month to month, that would obligate them to a whole another year. Another thing is foreclosure. Somebody loses their home out there, you know, and they have no place to go other than the residence that they're trying to build. As an established Currituck resident, I feel they should be able to go ahead and have a temporary residence there. And I would also disagree that it doesn't result in a logical and orderly development pattern. If you're building a permanent dwelling and you have nowhere else to live, then a temporary use structure would be logical. You need to have that so you can complete your permanent dwelling. In this particular instance, we are building the house cash. We are not taking out a loan, trying to limit our exposure, and just try and be smart as we're getting older. So yeah, it's going to take a little while. You know, we didn't have enough cash to just go out and pay a builder $200 a square foot to build us a house. Sure most of you can understand that. So I would urge the Board to please go ahead and consider, we do accept the recommendations as far as what the staff recommended. If you do consider it as far as the restrictions and so on and so forth, we don't have a problem with that because we certainly understand that this type of use could be abused, and that is certainly not our intent. We've been out there since 2003. We don't ever plan on leaving, and this is just another means for us to get there. So again, if there's restrictions imposed, certainly we will agree to those to avoid the abuse in the future from other people. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. I kind of went out of order. I forgot to ask if anybody had any questions for staff. So at this time, if anybody has any questions for staff. All right, does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Uh, yes, I do. Are you currently living on the beach?
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned that you had already just sold your house.
No, I'm just using that as a for instance. We are currently in our house at 2195 Ocean Pearl, and we are building a new home at 1430 Ocean Pearl. And we would like the temporary residence at 1430 so that we can get out of our current house.
So you can go ahead and sell it?
Correct.
Any other questions or comments?
Anyone else to speak?
Yeah, so anybody else to speak, or any rebuttals? Or I mean, anybody opposed? At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Was there any discussion?
Is there any, is there any discussion? Man, I'm off tonight.
Is there any way to do it on an individual basis, or does it have to be blanketed? Turtle UDO?
I think, I mean, if we do it like this, yeah, it would be blanketed, but is there a way to do it individually, like case by case? I think we discussed that in the work session. It would be difficult to pass an ordinance in that way.
How long would this temporary residence last, too?
Well, if it's approved, what staff has recommended is six months with a maximum three-month extension if needed. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Were you going to say something?
You could do a use permit for that, but then that would be every time someone would want this use, essentially a camper or an RV on their property while they're building their house, would have to come before the Board of Commissioners in a quasi judicial setting, which puts a big burden on the applicant. So that would be one thing, but that, once again, that's a very burdensome process for an applicant.
Is that something you'd be willing to do?
Yes, sir.
How long is that process for an applicant? And the cost?
And the cost, yeah.
It would be a two to three-month process, and we just updated our, and it's $400, I think, for a use permit application. Like I said, that would be on a case-by-case basis, but that is very burdensome. If you all remember, some of you may remember when the Planning Board heard use permits, it is a quasi judicial setting where you do have to make findings of fact. The applicant would essentially have to say that what he's, what the applicant's going to be doing on his property is not going to impact the value of adjoining properties and things of that nature in a factual basis.
So can we combine this, if we do decide to do this, a use permit with those conditions that you guys recommended?
You could. You could add those as far as a use permit and have these defined.
I'm sorry, I was looking up the cost of the use permit.
300. 300, I'm sorry, 300.
300.
I'm not familiar, the new fee schedule.
That's all right.
I'm still learning it.
So we could do something along a case-by-case basis with a special use permit?
And still apply these...
Still apply the recommendations of staff.
Am I correct in saying that if an applicant were to apply for a use permit, they totally bypassed the Planning Board? In years past, we used to hear those cases, but they would totally bypass us and go directly to the Board of Commissioners for their consideration, and they would be the ones who would implement any conditions on a use permit.
Correct. It's heard directly by the Board of Commissioners. Use permits are now heard directly by the Board of Commissioners. They could add any extra conditions. You could amend the ordinance to include these conditions, and then during the use permit process hearing, additional conditions could be added to that, as long as the applicant...
But if we approve it as written with the suggestions from staff, that would be a little less restrictive than if we did it as a use permit, correct?
Correct.
But you wouldn't have the individuality?
Yeah.
I almost think these need to be treated on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I agree.
Because of the different geological reasons for the county. It's much different in his neighborhood than on the mainland.
Would the applicant then have to agree to modify the application?
They would have to resubmit a new application.
Or they would have to resubmit a new application? Or can we do this, if he agrees with us right here, we can make the modification right now?
You can make the, you can make this, you can make the recommendation if he's agreeable to it.
What do you say?
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion?
One of the things I think, I think that's much more of an acceptable thing than saying either yes or no.
Sure.
Because you could also include any temporary one because of fire or because of something else, so that if you do this process, yes, it costs the applicant a little bit money, but then the county has better control over where these temporary...
But we're not, by doing this, we're not modifying the temporary aspect of this process, right? That would be something completely separate.
It's still a temporary.
It's still a temporary use.
I mean, like for the, for the current use.
You mean for fire damaged or flood damage structures?
We're not doing this for the entire...
I mean, that's not what was, that's not what the application was for.
Right, this would just apply for new construction, not for the temp, not, I'm sorry, not for those, those that have a current building and they've been, they have to, hurricane, flood, whatever, they have to rebuild. The use permit would not apply to them, is that correct? Or would it? If we modify this?
That's correct. Currently, now if the Board changes that with this text amendment, then they would have the same process.
Would all fall under the same...
Only if the ordinance is amended that way.
So you're right. So it would affect the whole thing instead of just the one...
I really think that's a strong thing to keep control over it. Because otherwise, you've got, you know...
Make that a condition that the displaced are already allowed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
If I may, if I'm understanding you correctly, you're saying that you want to deny the proposed text amendment and make the suggestion to the applicant to go ahead forward with a use permit directly to the Commissioners to allow that temporary use. Is that correct?
That's correct, but is there a way that we can do that in...
The text amendment has to be approved to allow that use through a use permit process. So what you're, what you would be recommending potentially is to suggest or approve with conditions, or approve that it would be a use permit subject to certain conditions, and then determine which zoning districts it applies to.
That means if we do approve this, then you would have to submit a use permit after this. Okay, any more discussion? Thank you, ma'am. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion if I can get it straight here. To, thank you. Going to the wrong sheet here. To approve PB 1821 for special use, to be allowed with special conditions for a special use permit, and to make exception for displaced, fire, water, the same that it already is.
So what you're saying is that the displaced would not have to submit a use permit? Is that...
Correct.
Just so I can confirm with staff before we get a second, if we apply this, can we put a condition in there to exclude displaced that are building a, rebuilding a home?
For new lots. It's the only one that would require a special use permit.
Can we do that?
Right, you, yeah. You could.
I understand. Okay, we have a motion?
There, there is a provision down here in staff's recommendation, the asterisk last one, about carefully considering whether the use should be permitted in SFR zoning district, just maybe be clear on whether you want to include that zoning district or not with this use permit.
And what is that zoning district again?
SFR, single-family remote, outer banks, remote.
Well, I think that's why we need to treat those on a case-by-case basis and leave it up to the...
Well, I think what she's saying, though, is because this application specifically is for that area, we need to consider that, because it would exclude you as being able to do this.
Okay.
So do we, do we want to make that exclusion?
Am I correct in saying that this text amendment applies to the entire county if we do not specifically say particular zoning districts?
That's correct, except for in the eight recommendations, number seven suggests that it be limited to the ag, SFM, and SF5 zoning districts.
Right. So do you want to modify your proposal to delete that one recommendation from staff?
Yes, but if I can find it, make sure I get the right one.
Page 10.
So, motion to approve PB 1821 with the single lot, temporary residence would require a special use permit, the displaced homes would not, and all the recommendations listed here by staff for new construction, except for number eight. Is that correct?
Include or not include the SFR zoning district specifically.
Well, number eight is the SFO.
That's SFO. That's for the paved road area of Corolla. The SFR is the remote, the four-wheel drive area.
Okay, so we need to include SFR. Is that what you're saying?
If that's what you want to do, yes.
Okay, so we need all eight recommendations by staff, and then to include the zoning for this gentleman, SFR.
As a point of...
Oh, I see, point of fact, yeah.
As a point of clarification, number eight is disallowing in SFO, not allowing.
So what we would have to do is then modify number seven to include SFR.
Correct.
Okay.
And strike number eight.
And you also want to include SFO?
No.
Okay, well then, don't strike number eight then.
Okay.
We'll get it straight.
Okay. Include all eight recommendations by staff and include SFR on number seven.
Am I correct in saying SFO is paved area of Corolla?
Correct.
SFR is...
Four-wheel drive area.
Carova area.
And to be clear, new construction requires a special use permit on case-by-case basis from the Commissioners. Temporary displaced residents do not. They would be allowed to do the same that they are now.
Okay.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, it sounds good.
Yeah.
I have a, I like to make, well, I can't really make discussion until a second occurs.
Do you want to make a modification first, or do you want to ask him for a modification?
If we have a second first, then we can discuss it.
Okay, let's do that.
Well, that's my motion.
Do you have a second?
I second.
All right, do we have any discussion?
It appears to me that if we're going to allow temporary residences in specific zoning districts, then, am I correct in saying that there are other zoning districts other than the ones listed, including general business where single-family residential is allowed?
You mean a dwelling used, yes.
Would it not be logical to include all zoning districts that have single-family residential as an allowable use, so that it is total continuity between all zoning districts in allowing temporary residences for new construction?
You could.
It does make more sense, yeah.
Mr. Ball, would you like to modify your motion perhaps?
I would accept that modification.
Well, I hear a second on the modification.
Before you do, my opinion is I think we still ought to keep number eight, keep SFO out of that.
Well, with what Stephen just said, what you would do is even in the, well, no, you wouldn't, because...
It doesn't seem logical to allow this temporary use in every zoning district except single-family outer banks and allow it everywhere else. That doesn't appear to be fair to the public.
As long as it's a single-family residential. I would agree with that, yeah.
I mean, if you're going to allow it in one area, it seems logical, and to maintain continuity to have it among all zoning districts that allow residential, single-family.
Let me make sure I'm reading number eight correctly. The way it's worded, it says not permitted in the SFO commercial or industrial districts. Are they talking about just the SFO commercial and industrial districts? Or are they talking about...
All three.
All three as a separate?
All, any and all. That would be commercial or industrial. Be LI, HI, GB.
So we're being exclusive there. So if we change, if we modify it to say, to add, instead of number eight saying not in this area, go with, delete eight altogether, and modify seven to say all single-family residential zoning districts.
Zoning districts that allow that use.
With, that are currently allow that use, and then do away with eight altogether.
So you're saying all zoning districts that allow a single-family dwelling use?
I don't like it.
What is, go ahead, make a suggestion.
Well, it's just a Corolla area. It's such a tight community, and it's mostly all residential, and to have temporary trailers on those properties, it's just, the way the area is set up is completely different than the mainland.
Is that why you guys put SFO in there?
Yes.
Is it, is it, question for staff, is it allowable to have a builder set up a temporary office on a site in SFO?
Yes.
And is it currently...
Then having that would not be any different than having an office on the property temporarily if it was a residence. It's the same kind of thing.
Is it currently permissible for someone who's displaced to rebuild a home and put it there in the SFO?
Yes.
So it wouldn't be any different?
It nearly is the same type of thing if a builder puts a temporary office on a site versus a homeowner who is building, putting a temporary dwelling on the site. I think you still have the same kind of occupation of the lot in size and that type of thing.
Any more discussion? Did you want to modify your...
Yeah.
I think he already said he was...
Yeah.
Okay. He's a meaningful...
Willing to allow a modification to include...
So to be, to be clear, it would be deleting number eight and modifying number seven to read all currently permissible uses of single-family residential, or however you want to word that.
I think all you've got to do is add the SFO to number seven. And just drop number...
But it still doesn't include...
Am I correct in saying that... Am I correct in saying that GB is the only other zoning district not listed here that allows single-family dwellings?
I'm not sure, I need to look at the use table.
I think light industrial and heavy industrial do not allow single-family dwellings.
So the zoning districts that don't allow single-family detached dwellings are the RC, which I don't think we have any, LI and an HI. So, right, so the industrial, the GB allows it.
Can I amend my modification suggestion?
Absolutely.
Go with what Mr. Balance has said, but on number seven should say any, allowed in any zoning district that allows single-family residences and keep number eight to say not be permitted in LI and HI zoning districts. Then that, that should close the loop.
Yeah.
All right. We have a motion?
And we already have a second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right, motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Balance.
Thank you, Mr. Balance. It's a tough one. All right, next we have PB 1820, Ponderosa Enterprises submitting for the county is Tammy Glave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Ponderosa, oh, thank you, this is Ponderosa Enterprises. You saw this about a year ago as a straight rezoning, since then the applicant withdrew that request, subdivided out this 11.6 acre parcel and is requesting a conditional rezoning on this property to go, well, let me get there, let me orient you first. This is the site highlighted here, our maple, the county's maple campus is across the shortcut road and the airport is here. And you can see that it is currently zoned agriculture and the reason I wanted to show you the map, because there's also a sliver here that's zoned general business, so it's to rezone this entire parcel you see in blue to conditional general business. The parcel is full service in the land use plan. There's also a maple barco small area plan and that classifies this area as a center for employment. The, there are airport compatibility zones on this property, there's actually three. And each of those zones are limited, zone one and two are limited to density requirements and zone three is regulated by the underlying zoning district. This is a copy of the plan, the master plan that has been submitted, there's not a specific user at this point, but rather a concept plan so that the property can be marketed for a specific user. Some of the features I'll point out, the airport zones that we were talking about, the more stringent airport zone you'll see is this hashed area and you'll see that they've taken all of their buildings and uses out of those areas and just have open space and connectivity in those areas. The front, this long portion here is a gas canopy with a proposed convenience door. And then when you come across the sidewalk here, you will see four separate buildings and each with the opportunity to be some sort of retail or commercial, office or professional place of employment, some live-work situations, which is typically, the business is on the bottom floor and the people live above it on the second floor. The buildings range in size from approximately 7,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet on the proposed plan. The use is compatible with the land use plan, since this is zoned full service and we can be assured through applied conditions that the district will, will meet the standard that we're looking for in this area. The policy in the land use plan says that this should emerge as a principal community center serving central areas of the mainland and that includes all of that maple complex that you see, the airport and of course this. I won't read them to you, but some of the planned consistencies are planned, are policy CD1, CD2, CD4, CD9, and ED1, and they're all listed in your packets. Again, it is consistent with the, the small area plan for maple barco, again, an employment center, a campus-like setting where you have multiple buildings that have a facing central courtyard. Some of those plans that you'll see in your staff report that are consistent, some of those policies are LU4, LU9, and TR4. The applicant proposed two conditions, one of which is that the property would not be used as mini storage and that a type A landscaping buffer will be provided between the two GB uses. So this, to give you an idea of where that buffer would be, this is the mobile home park, so the applicant is providing, agreed to provide a type A landscaping buffer along this property line that's not required. The applicant also provided renderings of what they proposed that the building should look like and you can see some of the design features if I, as I flip through some of these, let me know if I go too fast. And one of the conditions staff is proposing is that the buildings would be consistent with these design features that are shown here. Staff is recommending some additional conditions that we would ask the applicant to, considering if you'll remember with a conditional zoning request, the applicant has to agree to the conditions as well for those to be made requirements. Number one, that the building architecture that you just saw, that it be adopted as part of the conditional rezoning and that anything built would be consistent with that architectural design. That residential uses only be allowed through a mixed-use building and that's that live-work building, to limit densities allowed in the airport approach zones. To place the fueling and canopy to the side or rear of the, of the fuel and convenience center building and move the building itself closer to the shortcut road. That building would be the first thing you see when you come into the project and should really set the tone for the complex and further enhance that campus-like setting. Provide a central courtyard for pedestrian features, and when we say pedestrian features, think of such things as sidewalks, benches, water features, those things. And again, orient your buildings toward that central courtyard. Provide a handicap-accessible pedestrian connection to the mobile home park to encourage pedestrian activity between the two uses instead of people getting in their vehicles, coming out of the mobile home park and then coming into the commercial use. Provide a minimum and maximum square footage to ensure compatibility with the area and impose a two-story limit on all buildings because of the airport approach zone. Staff feels that this request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the land use plan and the maple barco small area plan. It's compatible with the existing and proposed uses surrounding the land subject to the application and it's also an appropriate zoning district in use for the land. TRC recommends approval based on the applicant's conditions that he offered, as well as with the conditions that I just went over that staff recommended. And that is all I have and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
I have a question for you, Ms. Glave. Number six on the suggested conditions of approval that must be agreed to by the owner, can you explain to us the logic behind providing a minimum and maximum building square footage to ensure compatibility with the area and what would be a suggested minimum and maximum amount?
What they have on their plan as a suggestion, their largest, that's not very easy to see, I don't know if you can see it better in your packets, but their largest building is 10,000 square feet, staff certainly agrees that that's compatible with, with the complex across the street. The smaller ones, I can't read it there. Let's see, the smaller spaces. One of them is labeled, they may all be the same size, one of them is labeled at 7,000 square feet. They're all seven, okay, thanks Eddie, they're all 7,000 square feet, that's, that's certainly an acceptable minimum as well, but if the applicant choose, would desire to ever build anything smaller, they would have to amend the plan.
So, they've already provided the minimum and maximum by providing this? Is that what you're saying?
No, because this is, this is a concept plan. So they could potentially want to come in with something smaller than what's here.
Sure, but they would have to come back to you first.
They'd have to come back to us first.
Ms. Glave, what do you believe would be an acceptable minimum amount of square footage for a building, for this concept?
Um, I, I think that's really up to the applicant, I would say five to 7,000, somewhere in that area, certainly acceptable. When you look at the buildings in the county complex across the street, you know, the one, some of them are much larger, some of them are similar in size.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Not at this time.
All right, Mr. Hyman, you sign up to speak?
Yes, my name is Eddie Hyman with the Timmins Group and I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have. Tammy has done well at presenting what we have tried to get together as a conceptual zoning plan. I know the blanket rezonings are basically a thing of the past because it's just cart block, what the allowable uses are. We met several times with planning staff to try to formulate the plan that you had before you and we came up with some good ideas, some ways they wanted to steer this gateway to the county and some, and some features that would serve the, the growing area there with the ball fields, the YMCA and the activities that are going there, as well as the campus growing from across the street, COA campus and the educational possibilities that could take place here too. The, so, so like I said, we felt like we got a good conceptual plan put together as we move forward and then it comes to you with their recommendation of approval based on the things, items we discussed. And the, some of the suggested conditions that she's mentioned are actually requirements, like the densities within this airport, some of these airport zones and the height restrictions, they would also be dictated and required by the overlay area, but I feel certain that the developer, Mr. Ponderosa Enterprises, would be in agreement to what they had put forth here. But if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer any.
Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I have a question for you, Mr. Hyman, how are you doing tonight?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Good to see you all again.
Yes, sir. When it comes to these suggested conditions of approval that staff has created, are you and the owner of Ponderosa Enterprises willing to accept these conditions?
We had discussed them, I thought he would be here tonight, he must think the meeting is at seven o'clock.
We did change that.
I did talk to him, what's that?
I said, we did surprise, we should know.
And I didn't have a chance to let him know we were starting, but I hate to speak on his behalf, I, like I said, I wish he was here, the, they all seem acceptable for the, a conceptual plan and a future plan could be developed towards that. I do also know that the, the fewer restrictions we put on it, the more marketability I have trying to find a client or a tenant or a potential buyer. So I'm at a kind of, I know several of them are going to be required at as we, if it does come forth as a, as a site plan, they would be forced to meet or be required to meet some of these suggested restrictions or conditions. Others could also be negotiated out of site plan submittal through TRC, just like we did when we put the design together. So without him being here to agree to them, I would hate to do that on his behalf.
Do you happen to have a number in your mind of what a reasonable minimum building square footage might be for this plan?
I feel like what you see proposed as a concept, if it gets rezoning approval based on this conceptual layout, it won't be allowed to deviate much. So the sizes and shapes that we show would be and the orientation to the courtyards and the things like that, I feel like the gas canopy would be okay to be shifted to the side of the building and the convenience or the gas support center would move forward, I don't think that would be a problem with Mr. Sawyer, but the rest of them, I would hate to speak towards that. Again, if we get our conceptual rezoning, it comes back through a whole planning process and site plan approval, TRC, you know, we get to reapprove when we really come back with a real buildable product, it would be reevaluated at that time to see that it agrees with what was approved in the rezoning and then that it actually is functional and what the county wants.
So it sounds like we almost need to wait on Mr. Sawyer to arrive before we can get a yes or a no on these conditions, am I correct in saying that?
Well, I, like I said, I don't want to give you an affirmative without him not being able to, to agree on it. But at the same time, most of these would be also addressed as it came forward. I know some of them are actually going to be required because of the zone we're in, several of them, the, like the height restrictions and the square footage, I feel like since that's consistent with the plan, I feel like he would agree to that, that if we just plug in the numbers that are on the plan. He is in agreement with what has been presented to you graphically on the plan. And as far as the, all the walkways would have to be ADA compliant anyway, if we provide walking paths between the stores and the buildings and the community, they would have to be compliant.
If I may add, the board could consider, if you're considering recommending approval with the condition that the conditions are worked out before we get to the board of commissioners meeting?
Yeah. We could, would you, would you feel more comfortable doing it that way or delaying until after item D?
I would rather be more comfortable doing that way, that way David and I can discuss it, I would feel more comfortable with that.
Ms. Glave.
Moving it to the end or modifying what we, like we just said, okay?
Modifying and letting the commissioners, let us discuss it with the commissioners on the conditions.
Ms. Glave, how does having the condition that the conditions are worked out with staff affect this?
It really does not harm the project because the conditions typically are worked out at board of commissioners level, sometimes before, but most of the time there are still some points of discussion at the commissioners meeting.
Thank you. I know Mr. Sawyer's been here quite a few times over the last couple of years with this project and he's done very well as far as taking recommendations from staff and the board and, and ran with it and I'm. board and, and ran with it, and I'm glad to see it's come here tonight.
And he's pleased with what we have here. And, and like I said, these conditions are suggested conditions. The ones that we wanted to put forth were the buffer and the mini storages. Those are the ones we added to. We didn't have to do that, but, so if we could get a recommendation with, and let these conditions, the suggested conditions be discussed at the planning, at the Board of Commissioners, that would be nice. Because I don't know if he's been waylaid, he may not be coming. He was working in the field.
But we were trying to figure out which way might work best if we would delay the vote on it and wait to, for him to arrive, or to go ahead with it as it is and make that condition a condition.
So, just to be clear, though, i- if we do approve this as written, this can still be modified by the Commissioners anyway?
Completely.
So, really no, no harm in approving it as is? Okay.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyman.
Any other questions from Mr. Hyman? Any discussion?
Yeah, I have one question. Our drawings all, all seem to be sim, uh, single-story, business, you know, offices or businesses or whatever. Am I right in saying that there was something in here that said that you could have a second story that was apartments or something?
In some concepts, the ground floor would be retail, and the second floor would be some residential.
But it would still be approximately this height?
Two-story, two-story max.
Okay, but this is only a single story, right?
Well, the facade appears to be single-story, but if you step back into the, to the, to the building there, you can have a split, have a dual, two-story building.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No. Mr. Hyman? There he is. All right, welcome in. Yeah.
Yeah.
Would the, the applicant, Ben, did you want to consult with him for a moment to find out if he would be willing to do that, if we wait a moment?
Let me talk for a little bit, and we'll, I'll be right with you.
All right.
Any other discussion while we're waiting?
Can we take a five-minute break while you?
Yeah. I think that would be a good idea. Let's take a five-minute break. Be back at seven o'clock.
Properties to the south are agricultural, to the east are agricultural, to the west are agricultural and general business, and to the north includes some areas of general business agricultural, and barely sticking out this area is some heavy industrial areas. This is the Moyac small area plan. It identifies all of the property as full service. And as I mentioned, this is the proposed development plan that amends that 2015 approval granted by the Board of County Commissioners. Phase one line is here, so this is the existing development area. This is phase two. The wood line was about right here, and this is the two connected stormwater ponds that are necessary for this area, and it leaves about four, just over fourteen acres in the back for future development. They are not ready at this time to prepare a development plan. That area needs to be evaluated by Corps of Engineers for wetlands, and it's fully wooded at this time, so they're not in a position to do that. In addition to that stormwater pond, there are also a couple of slight modifications to the development plan. The open space layout is slightly different because this area will now be dedicated as open space. It removes a perimeter open space dedication around the outer area of that future development. The open space that will be provided will exceed the county minimum, and one thing to point out is that future development area, when they're ready to provide a development plan that will indicate pedestrian access, roads, lots, they'll have to come back before the board for basically another amendment or new application to do that. In 2015, there were six conditions that the county and the developer agreed to. They are maintaining five of those six conditions. One will be removed that basically evaluates a ditch that is no longer being considered in the stormwater infrastructure for this development, and they did hold a community meeting in August, and there were several people present, and their main concerns centered around drainage, road interconnectivity, the NC DOT road right-of-way and maintenance, and that information is contained in your packet. If you have any questions regarding that, I'll be happy to answer those. We did find an area on the open space calculations that we'd request that that be amended before it's finally approved by the Board of Commissioners, and that's something that can be resubmitted back to staff. The proposed application is consistent with the 2006 land use plan. Basically, there's no additional lots being proposed, so the density is not being increased. They are providing, just providing additional stormwater infrastructure, and so they are maintaining the policy emphasis for the Moyac sub-area. It is consistent with policy HN1. I won't state that one to you, but it deals with the location and densities, meaning that it is in full service and the densities that are being proposed are consistent with that. The Moyac small area plan also identifies this property as full service. That designation allows for densities in the range of 1.5 to three units per acre, depending on the surrounding land uses, and their density proposed for this is less than one, so they are definitely consistent with that policy. They are also providing for additional buffers because their zoning district is of a higher classification than those surrounding it. Their density buffers will be maintained around the perimeter of the property, so they are consistent with policy FLU1. The consistency and compatibility statement, we find that this project is consistent with the Moyac small area plan and compatible with the future land use map, full service designation, and the densities that are proposed, and it is reasonable and in the public interest. It is similar to the existing development plan and results in an orderly and logical development pattern. And that's all I have, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for staff?
I have a question for you, Mrs. Volova. In regards to the open space calculation needing to be corrected, can you give us a little more detail about how that occurred and why it needs to be corrected?
It's a calculation area, era. It was including, there were some areas that were excluded from the calculation. They are exceeding what is required anyway. It's a minor calculation error.
So it was a minor error?
Minor error.
What is the percentage for open space? Is it twenty or?
So they have two areas. They have a thirty percent open space that's required for the residential areas and a ten percent open space required for the commercial area.
Got it. Any other questions for staff? Mr. Bissell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Mark Bissell. Came up from Kitty Hawk, and I think Ms. Volova has done an excellent job of giving you the particulars of the request. The one thing that I would add is that the main reason that we're having to do this amendment is that when we actually do the detailed computer modeling for the stormwater management system, you run a, you run the calculations to find out, to determine how much water, if you were assuming that the entire site was wooded and you have a two-year rainfall event, how much water leaves the site through each of those existing ditches. And what you're seeing here, what we're calling the existing drainage pattern, shows a number of ditches that are leaving that site. But when we, the only ditch that really carried any substantial amount of water off of site was ditch F, which you see kind of in the middle of the page toward the bottom, and that actually runs between a couple of existing houses, then runs through an eighteen-inch driveway culvert before it goes under Baxter Lane to an outfall. And so that was backing up a lot of stormwater on the site and on the adjacent properties. And if we could go to the next slide, exhibit D. These are actually exhibits that we had prepared back when we did the original preliminary plat application. Exhibit D shows, if you look in the, at the upper-left corner, there is a drain that comes under 168 and the railroad there that actually drains a couple of hundred acres on the other side of the highway that were at one time all coming through the middle of the site, and the plan was to provide some relief to those downstream property owners by rerouting that ditch. So we have actually constructed a new ditch along the western property line that runs, that basically just bypasses everybody and runs to that outfall ditch along Baxter directly. When we did the computer modeling, there's really very little water that's going into each of the other ditches that leave the site, and so the net result, the bottom-line result, and that coupled with the fact that we have a, don't have a lot of separation between a seasonal high-water table and the ground surface, it just means that the ponds get bigger. There has, you have to have more surface area to accommodate the ten-year storm. So we're basically holding the difference between a ten-year post-development storm and a pre-development two-year wooded condition runoff, which is very small. So we have these three existing ponds, but those are insufficient to handle all the runoff from the two phases, therefore proposing two additional ponds, which are going to be located in that wooded area that was just labeled as future development, and that's really the reason we're here.
And which ditch are they going to follow? I'm sorry. Are you all done?
Yes.
Do you have any questions?
Go ahead.
So which ditch are you going to follow to the ponds? You said not much water flows through most of those ditches, so which one is actually going to be the main ditch?
Well, that ditch that runs to the northwest, I mean, excuse me, to the northeast.
Yeah.
Basically runs east along the northern property line and then veers off to the north. That is the ditch. Well, actually, the stormwater is going to be divided between these two new ponds.
Right.
And the existing ponds that we built with phase one. The water that goes into the three existing ponds actually all goes into that new ditch that goes under Baxter along the west property line. The water from the new ponds will primarily flow to the northeast.
So are you going to improve some of the drainage to get to those ponds, or just existing drainage will suffice?
We're just...
You know how I feel about drainage.
Right. Well, we're putting less water in those ditches than is going in there now, is basically.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Bissell, thank you for coming tonight. Can you tell me approximately how far away from the ed, the east, northeast corner of the property line where that ditch exists to the Currituck Sound where it empties into?
It actually goes, it goes to Virginia before it reaches an outlet. It runs along a couple of farms, and then there's a, there's a slew that goes into what becomes, I believe, the Northwest River.
Northwest River.
So that particular ditch does not empty in the same route as the one along the road?
I think, you know, eventually they meet up somewhere downstream.
And there are no plans for your client to clear anything outside of the subdivision along that ditch line? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Jane, anything? No questions?
I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bissell.
I was just going to say, just to, just to give you all a heads up, we will, we do plan to come back with a phase three once we have got a wetland delineation approved. But we have gotten differing opinions, and just to explain why we're not doing that now, we had a one environmental consultant who gave an opinion that all of the woods was wet, and another one that gave an opinion that none of the woods is wet, and we believe that the, we're going to end up somewhere in the middle, with most of the woods being upland, but some portion of it being wetland that we need to avoid, and that's why we're not showing you a plan yet.
I do have one more question, though, based on his response, then. Was, Mr. Bissell, if I'm correct, this plan is only for phase two, and you mentioned that there's plans for a possible phase three, whether there also be additional retention or detention ponds that are going to exist on that other property?
Yes. The ponds that we're proposing now have the capacity to serve phases one and two with a little bit of excess capacity, but not enough to serve phase three. So the plan would probably be that we would enlarge those plan, those ponds that we're proposing now.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Page forty-seven.
Page forty-seven, yep.
Okay, I see. Mr. Chairman, I'll recommend a motion that we approve PB 1822 because it is consistent with the land use plan, the public interest, and to include the conditions put forth by staff, one through five.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to ask Mr. Balance if he would mind adding in that the correction be made on the open space calculation.
Sure.
Add that to the conditions.
And to add to that, the calculation correction.
Any other discussion?
Pass the question.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bissell. Next item, I think, is going to be a little trickier, but we have PB 1714, county solar text amendment, and we'll have Ms. Tammy Glave presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Get repositioned here. In May of 2017, the Board of Commissioners directed staff to propose a text amendment to reintroduce solar as an allowable use in the county. We had solar, we amended it multiple times, and then we removed it as an allowable use to give time to come up with some acceptable standards, and that's what you're going to see tonight, is based on multiple work sessions with the Board of Commissioners. We had a lot of help with the text amendment from some experts at NC State, the NC Center for Clean Energy, School of Government offered a couple of workshops that we attended, so you're going to see an accumulation of lots of research. You don't need to hear all of it. Okay, so what I will do, unless you tell me otherwise, is go through section by section. If you see that I'm going on too long, tell me to skip that part. I'm fine with that. But we'll start off with two things. I should also, I should also add our wind energy. So in our use table, you will see that we are adding back solar energy facilities as an allowable use in the agricultural zoning district with a use permit, subject to the conditions we're getting ready to go over, and you'll also see the removal of wind energy facilities as an allowable use in the county, and we'll discuss that a little later. Solar energy facilities would be allowed to locate in areas in the county that are zoned agricultural. They cannot be in the full service designation in our land use plan, and they cannot be in areas of significant natural heritage areas as identified by the NC Natural Heritage Program. The ordinance is written would allow two abutting property owners to be on an application so that you could have more than one property owner. A lot of times you'll see projects, multiple properties and property owners will, will join to create one project. We are now setting a size limit. The solar energy facility cannot exceed 250 acres or half of the acreage of the property as it existed on the date that we adopt this, whichever is greater. So if you own 1,000 acres, you could have a 500-acre facility. Setbacks are going to be measured from your major arterial at 300 feet. At other NC DOT rights-of-way and property lines, it'll be 150-foot setback. All panels, equipment, security fencing will have a 100-foot setback from any cam navigable waterways or wetlands or significant natural heritage areas. If projects, if two properties combine to form one project, they will still have to meet the, those setbacks we talked about from the interior property lines. So if you have two properties side by side, there would be 150-foot setback from that property line for each of those properties. Let's see here. Something to note is that plantings would be allowed in those setback areas. Speaking of height and configuration, the height of the solar equipment and the panels at maximum tilt would not be allowed to be more than 15 foot above grade. Let's see. And believe it or not, this next one was the only solar ordinance requirement that we had when we got our first solar project, but it was that the panels and equipment shall be configured to avoid glare beyond the exterior property lines. We have added a sound section, and that is that the hours of operation during construction phase would be 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and during the construction phase, if they're within 1,500 foot of a school or licensed preschool, there would be a prohibition to pile driving during regular school session times. The, I'll kind of summarize the buffers and screening for you. There will be a requirement for a type D, which is a completely opaque buffer, or an earthen berm as tall as the tallest panel at maximum, maximum height. The type D buffer is, like I said, completely opaque, and you, they would have three years for that 100% opacity. There will be a performance guarantee required at 115% of the cost of the vegetative material. If 100% opacity is not reached within that three-year time, then funds will be called and the plantings will be put in place to meet that 100% opacity. The common interior property line that we talked about, if two lots share a system, does not have to meet the buffer requirements. There is a development plan that's required prior to submission. I won't go into a whole lot of detail there. That's typically what you would see with a site plan for most things. You have to show existing features, signs, fencing, all the components of the plan. All the components of the project would have to be shown on the plan. The, looking on page, well, you have a different packet than I do, I'm sorry, but looking at one of the new requirements, as far as buffering is concerned, is a 30% requirement that the plantings, 30% of the project's size, acreage, would, one, two, or a combination of these two things I'm getting ready to go over, 30% would have to be planted according to the North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission Habitat Conservation Division, does show that it's a native pollinator habitat, or 30% could be left in crops that are harvested, and we would have a plan for that to show that it's going to be continued to be farmed, or you can have a combination of those two things as long as it equals 30%. Environmental concerns, we're still requiring the ground cover grasses to stabilize the soil, limiting unwanted weeds and vegetation to two feet, prohibiting the use of herbicides. One of the groundwater concerns that has been added is the requirement for groundwater monitoring wells. It was in one of our previous versions of our, of our ordinance, but not to this, to this detail. This basically requires a groundwater monitoring well near the center of the property along each exterior property line, and there be no more than 2,000 feet between the monitoring wells. They would have to test the water before they started, and then each year thereafter to show compliance with the next set of rules here. It says testing data shall show compliance with the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services private well inorganic chemical contaminants, and that is a drinking water standard that our health department was able to help us with and give us standards for that, and you could see the items listed that would be tested for. There is the caveat there that the commissioners may require additional testing for other contaminants in the future should, should the need arise. The solar impact analysis that you see, that includes such things as your construction activity plan, your operation plan, impact and resources that might be affected as a result of the project. And then we get into what's called decommissioning, and that's when the life expectancy of the solar farm is complete and it is decommissioned. This would require a decommissioning bond to be, or performance guarantee to be put into place to make sure that the site is brought back basically to the condition it was prior to the solar facility going in. They would have 12 months to decommission the site, and the performance guarantee would be equal to 115% of the estimated decommissioning costs. This version of the ordinance would not allow for the reduction of salvage value. As far as the wind is concerned, staff was directed to remove that as an allowable use in the county, and that would be any wind energy facility, not like, if you're familiar with the Bruin Station in Kitty Hawk, they have one wind turbine. That question was asked. That would be considered an accessory to that business. It would not be considered a wind energy facility. You'll see some definitions that have been revised or added. Clarify the definition of a solar energy facility. Staff does recommend approval of this request as it is consistent with the 2006 land use policies, including AG1 and ED1, and that the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it prevents incompatible solar array projects from being established that could adversely impact the quality of life for county residents, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
I have a few questions for you, Ms. Glave. Section K, solar energy facility, item two, maximum size, A, talks about the maximum size, 250 acres, or one-half of the acreage of the property as it existed on the adoption date, whichever is greater. Does that mean that once this is adopted by the Board of Commissioners, individuals are not able to recombine properties to exceed 250 acres to have a solar array upon it?
That is correct.
But however, before that date, they are able to recombine lots to create a larger lot?
Yes.
And as long as it was finished by the time this was enacted?
Right.
Then they could do that?
Yes, sir.
Another question for you. In regards to sound, that's K5, sound. The hours of operation during construction phase of the solar energy facility shall be from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Can you explain to the board and to the public what is the reasoning for not having Saturdays or Sundays as workdays?
That was the direction we received from the board.
From the Board of Commissioners?
We had received feedback from citizens that the construction on the weekends was negatively impacting their quality of life, specifically the one in the Moyac, in the Moyac area. It was so large, and they were doing construction on the weekends, and it was negatively impacting their quality of life. So this was asked, we were asked to put in Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. to address those concerns.
What is the current times that are available to be? What is the current times that are available to be working as it stands right now or while that was under construction?
If it, you could work 24 hours a day, but you had, you couldn't go over a certain decimal level or have light pollution?
Okay.
During certain times.
And both of those were measured?
I believe so. The sheriff department handles that and I, I know they went out for a light complaint and a noise complaint. And at that time, they were not valid complaints. They couldn't, they took the measurements, but the readings did not show that they were not in compliance.
Lori, at any time, was the solar array facility contractors in the Moyac one ever fined for a violation?
No.
Uh, no. They, they were cited?
I don't think they were cited.
They weren't cited. No, they were never fined.
Cited for noise?
We investigated complaints for dust on our end, um, for dust generation from the roads. The sheriff's office investigated the, the noise and light pollution. And we may have gone out with light pollution. And at the time of inspection, there were no violations found.
What was the citation for?
I don't know that they had a citation.
I misspoke, I said we did not have a citation.
Oh, you did not? Did you not? Okay, I'm sorry.
I have one other question for you, Ms. Glave. Number eight, or just above number eight in section seven B, the solar energy facility, project shall designate 30% of the total land area in one or a combination of the following plans. Is this speaking about the land that is within the solar array facility land or land external to the solar array?
It's the entire boundaries of the project.
Can you give us more detail about what that means?
If you have 100 acres that, your lot's 100 acres, 30 acres has to meet the 30% requirement.
So it's kind of like the open space requirement?
Yes.
And, and the 150 foot buffer is included in that?
Yes, you can put your plantings in that buffer.
I have one other question, Ms. Glave, and that might be all of them this time. Section 10, discontinued use and decommissioning, F3, speaking about decommissioning, shall not be reduced by salvage value. Above that, it says shall equal 115% of the estimated decommissioning costs. Does that mean that if it costs $100,000 and the equipment is worth $100,000, the decommissioning value would be zero? You're saying that can't happen?
That cannot happen under this version of the text amendment.
So if the salvage value was 100,000 and it was 200,000 to decommission it, it's still 200,000?
Still 200,000 plus the 15%.
That the 115% would be applied to.
Right.
Thank you. That's all my questions right now.
Any other questions for staff?
I, I just wanted to re-clarify the, you mentioned like a windmill with the, uh, Outer Banks Brewing Station. That's an accessory use and will not apply?
Right.
Under this rule.
This is just to the utility scale, wind farms.
They'll still be allowed to do an accessory use windmill?
Yes, or if somebody wants one on a farm or their home, as long as they're providing the power just for themselves, it would not apply.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, we've got four folks that are slated to speak. By show of hands, uh, I've got, um, let's go Adam, Harrison, Jim, and Andy. Of those four, uh, by show of hands, which are here for wind? Just one and solar? The other three, okay. So then what I'd like to do then is modify our time a little bit. What I'd like to do is give 20 minutes to the solar folks and 10 minutes to wind rather than 20 minutes total. So, um, I don't know who's, who's who, uh, so let's go with, uh, wind first. I believe that's Adam, right?
My name is?
10 for wind, 20 for solar.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
There you go. No, it's fine. My name's Adam Ford, I'm from Durham, North Carolina. I work for the Southeastern Wind Coalition, which is a nonprofit group. Uh, we focus on the economic development and business side of wind energy. Simply removing utility scale wind as permissible use is not a rational or reasonable way to regulate wind energy. Uh, wind energy has a host of benefits that can provide not only the state's economy, but a local economy. Uh, and there are several benefits from payments to landowners, increased tax revenue, attraction of supply chain, manufacturing companies, other jobs that can be attracted to the area that come with utility scale wind. Certainly, wind energy is a, a vast and expansive infrastructure project, uh, and there are certainly impacts that wind can have in a community. Uh, but there are already several regulations in place that are some of the best available regulations in order to mitigate these impacts. Uh, I mentioned that wind can be very expansive, so they cover everything from environmental considerations, agriculture, excuse me, uh, historical preservations and considerations that need to be taken into account. But given where the conversation around wind has been in North Carolina and given the location of Currituck County, uh, it seems that one of the, the most important regulations to understand, most important dynamics to understand, is how wind energy interacts with the military. Uh, there is an entity called the Military Aviation and Installation Siding Clearing House, which is located in the Department of Defense. And this entity's sole job is to assess the potential impacts from proposed wind farms in order to assess whether or not they will have a significant adverse impact on nearby training, on, on the nearby training and missions of local bases. And the way that process works is that when a wind developer wants to build a project, uh, they will submit their plans, their preliminary plans to the clearinghouse. Uh, it is the Military Aviation Installation Siding Clearing House, for short, we call it the clearinghouse. Uh, and what the clearinghouse does, it takes that preliminary information, size, location of the project. And what they do is they bring in officials and experts from local bases in every service branch in order to provide information to the clearinghouse about those bases' mission and training. And what they do is they take in that information and they will model whether or not the proposed project is likely to have an impact. And if it is, is possible that it will have a, uh, possibly will have an impact, what the clearinghouse does is it forms a mitigation response team, MRT. That involves, again, experts from local bases, that involves the developer, and that involves the clearinghouse. So again, all local bases and branches of the military are involved. And what they will do is they will assess possible solutions in order to mitigate the potential impacts while still allowing the developer to build their project. And those solutions can take a lot of different forms. Sometimes it is reducing the number of turbines, and we saw that with the, uh, Amazon project, uh, just down the road from here. Sometimes that is reducing, uh, or moving the location of turbines. In one case, I know a developer has even paid to upgrade an antiquated radar facility so that radar was better able to display some of the turbines. Uh, but all of these solutions have two things in common. One, they allow the developer to continue building their project and it mitigates the impacts to the military's training and missions so that there are no longer any significant adverse impacts. Now, during this process, it is possible that a solution can't be reached, an agreement can't be reached, and then the clearinghouse formally objects to the project and they object with the Federal Aviation Administration. That has only happened one time in the history of this process for a very good reason. This is a very proactive process and developers are rewarded for bringing their projects to the clearinghouse early on. By bringing the project early on, they are able to work with the clearinghouse, identify potential impacts, and then work with the clearinghouse on those potential solutions. And it is often the case that as a developer's working with the military, if they see that the potential solutions are going to make the project uneconomical to build, they will oftentimes abandon attempting to build the project. So you see, you see a process that is very successful, very proactive, and allows local communities the opportunity to host and receive the benefits from a utility scale wind project without jeopard, without jeopardizing the nearby military facility's mission or training. And so communities in the state still receive the benefits from both the military and wind energy. So there are several, uh, different regulations that are similar to this one. I thought this one was the, the most important and, uh, possibly the most timely to consider. Uh, and I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that the committee may have about the clearinghouse or other regulations around wind energy.
The, the county's concern, according to, um, this text amendment is that it removes a, by, by getting rid of wind energy, it removes a potential conflict between wind energy facilities and the operation of the nearby naval annex, um, just over the border. It sounds like what you're saying is that there is a, an instruction or a regulation, is this a, that, that would prevent anyone from building, um, near, near a base or, explain how, why that wouldn't be an issue?
So, under this framework, uh, if someone wanted to build a wind energy facility in Currituck County, what they would do is they would have to take their proposed project to the clearinghouse. And the clearinghouse would take in all the information from nearby facilities, including the facility we're talking about here. And they would ask that facility, okay, where's your radar looking, uh, where are your flight paths? And they would assess, they would take the information and they assess the likelihood that this project could have an impact on the training and mission of that base.
What, what type of regulation is that? I mean, who, who, who sponsored that regulation? Is it?
Yeah. So the, uh, the clearinghouse, the, the legislation that authorized the clearinghouse is in the National Defense Authorization Act. It was started in 2011 and then in this Congress in 2018, the National Defense Authorization Act was updated to implement some of the best practices that developers were, were already doing. Some of those include, uh, coming to the clearinghouse a year before developers are going to build their project. It allows the clearinghouse to accept funds from developers to make some of those improvements. A good example would be receiving funds from a developer to upgrade a radar facility. Uh, it also authorizes the clearinghouse to designate areas that would be highly problematic to build in, specific geographic areas that would be difficult to build in. So there are a lot of improvements that were made to the clearinghouse in this 2018 National Defense Authorization Act, among other things.
I'm a, I'm a big fan of, um, Ronald Reagan, so, you know, the whole verify thing comes to mind. Do you have a copy of this regulation with you?
I do not. I don't, I don't carry the National Defense Authorization Act on me for many reasons.
I thought maybe in preparation for this.
No, that was something I left. It's, it's very long, but, uh, I'd be more than happy to, when I get back to the office, provide a copy to the committee and, and anyone else who's interested in reading that. And I can highlight the specific language which authorizes the, the clearinghouse and outline some of the activities that they do.
All right. And any other questions?
I have a question for you. Do you mind if I call you Adam?
No.
I didn't get his last name.
No, it's, it's four, but it, it's complicated and we have a lot of Es and Rs, so Adam's fine.
All right, Adam. In regards to the naval annex and the possibilities of having interruptions in the radar signal, you say the clearinghouse has an impact on what happens and how it interacts with the armed forces. What can you tell me about what happened with that in regards to Pasquotank County? It appears that, from what we've read through newspaper articles and other things, that Pasquotank County had quite a debacle with wind energy, where it was approved, they were given the permit, those wind turbines were installed, and then they get notification from the government that, hey, we got a problem. Can you tell me where that has ended up?
Are you thinking specifically of the Amazon Wind Farm, U.S. East?
On north side of Elizabeth City, Pasquotank County.
Thank you. So the history behind that project is heavily steeped in the clearinghouse process. So early on, when the developer brought that project to the clearinghouse, the clearinghouse identified that there may be a conflict with that, uh, radar facility up in, in Virginia. Uh, and so what they did is they, uh, worked with, the Navy worked with MIT in order to come up with a new modeling system in order to model the level of impact that the Amazon project may have on the radar. And they went through that modeling process and part of the, they, once they computed the model, they said 104 turbines is the acceptable number of turbines that could be built without significantly adversely impacting the military's training and mission at that facility. Uh, so as part of the agreement, the clearinghouse said, you can only build 104. Originally Avon Grid, who's the developer, wanted to build 150. They said you can only build 104. And then we're going to monitor the project and we are going to validate the data that we used in the modeling to say that 104 is the maximum number of turbines, uh, that we can have this facility without adversely impacting the Rother facility, the relocatable over the horizon radar facility. And that year was up, uh, earlier this year, I believe June was about the time that the, uh, the modeling had, uh, concluded. And the Navy and, and MIT came back with the data, real, real time data that validated the model that said 104 turbines is the exact number of turbines that is suitable for that facility. So the clearinghouse, in this example, reduced the number of turbines from 150 to 104 and then validated the data over the course of a year to make sure that the model that they used was accurately reflecting the situation on the ground.
And Joseph, are you able to, uh, inform us about what type of radar exists at that location in Virginia?
Uh, the name of it is the relocatable over the horizon radar. Uh, I'm, I'm not a radar expert, so I can't go into, uh, how it works. Uh, again, I'd be happy to, in addition to the National Defense Authorization Act, I'd be happy to send along information, uh, that describes how that radar facility is used and the priority of that radar facility, which I believe is, uh, drug trafficking in, in South America.
If I'm not mistaken, that type of radar, it, it is very, very low to the ground and they believe that the interference is possible for wind turbines because they're 300 to 400 feet in altitude to the wingtips. And I'm, I'm assuming that that might be why they were concerned about having so many there.
I think they, I think that is certainly possible, and I think that is the strength of the clearinghouse, that because it is possible that there could be impacts, that instead of saying, we cannot have a wind turbine here because there might be impacts, that the clearinghouse process uses site-specific data to say whether or not a specific project, depending on the characteristics of that project, will or will not have an impact on that facility. So like with anything, you want to trust but verify. So you want to make sure that a wind facility that may be built will not have an impact or not have a significant adverse impact on the radar facility. And that is exactly what the clearinghouse process does, is model and ensure that a project that's built does not have that significant adverse impact. And they do that because there is the possibility for an impact.
To, to your knowledge, is there currently any interference with that wind farm being caused on the radars?
To my knowledge, there is not. Uh, it, there are certainly a lot of characteristics that go into the level of interference that the radar, uh, has on a, a given day. That is, again, in the modeling, and I know, also know that Avon Grid has a separate agreement with the clearinghouse. Uh, if the level of interference raises to a, a level that threatens national security, there are steps that the clearinghouse and the Department of Defense can take in order to remove that, uh, interference for a, a certain period of time.
So they monitored for a year during that time, if, if it did interfere, um, is there a process for removal of some of the turbines once, is there an agreement of sorts during the monitoring period?
Uh, so that would have, that would have happened after the data validation. So when they were collecting data for the model validation, uh, they wouldn't have been able to tell within that year because they were just collecting the data and they had to verify the model using that data. But afterwards, if there was, uh, a significant level of interference, then there would have been steps in place in order to address that impact. There are a lot of different ways, a lot of different forms that addressing that impact can take. Uh, curtailment could be one of those. Uh, there's also, uh, that is just shutting down the wind turbines at, at certain periods of time. Uh, but those weren't needed because of the work that was going on with the clearinghouse, with the Navy, with MIT, in order to do this modeling to show that 104 turbines would not have a significant adverse impact on that Rother facility.
Thank you, Adam.
First. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. All right, of the remaining three, who's first? State your name and your address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, and thanks to Tammy, who's listened to many of our concerns and working with us. I'm Jim Martin with First Solar, and I'm from Charlotte. First Solar is the largest solar panel manufacturer in the United States. We also develop, construct, own, and operate solar farms all over the world. And, uh, we'd like to respectfully ask you to reconsider several points in the solar ordinance that's proposed. The 250 acre cap, the setback restrictions, and the 50% limitation on ownership will cause serious issues with the economics to a solar project. And if you will allow me, I'd like to explain how the market has changed and, and how the solar industry has changed in the last several years. Many of you may know that the solar industry- Many of you may know that the solar industry in North Carolina started with small 5-megawatt solar farms that was driven by policy in the state of North Carolina, and also supported by utilities such as Duke and Dominion that allowed these solar farms to flourish and grow. And we saw rapid growth in North Carolina over several years with these type of solar farms. That market has ended. Duke and Dominion no longer support these smaller facilities, and instead, they're being driven by very large customers such as Amazon, Facebook, Walmart, who are, and others, who are demanding the majority of their energy come from solar and other renewable facilities. So, Dominion serves Currituck County, and over 50% of the internet traffic in the world travels through Dominion's service territory. And the data centers that are being constructed to support this traffic and the business operations of some of the customers that I named are driving this very large demand. And those customers are asking for more solar, larger solar farms, and more cost-effective solar farms. The way that the solar industry is responding to this demand is that we are building larger and larger solar farms in order to take advantage of the economy's scale of building a larger solar facility. So, the limitations of 250 megawatts as a cap, acres, pardon me, as a cap, or 50% of two different neighbors as a cap, or some of the setbacks that are in there, will severely hamper the ability to build a solar farm that's competitive in this type of environment. We're seeing solar farms that are built 80, 100, 150, or 200 megawatts in order to respond to the needs of the marketplace. And many times, I know it's been proposed, as two neighbors can join here, many times we have to accumulate multiple farms or parcels of land in order to make these projects cost-effective and work. So, there's even a 500-megawatt solar facility in development in Dominion Service Territory to serve Microsoft and some other customers. So, we just wanted to give you an aspect of the market that you may not have considered and how it has changed. In addition, hearing this evening about some of the limitations on construction, you know where the unemployment market is right now. If you try to get craft workers in here to try to work a shift of five, 10-hour days, you might not be able to get the electricians you need, because current craft labor is very difficult to get, and frequently, we're having to work six, 10-hour shifts in order to bring that craft in. So, would ask you to think about those limitations as well. Certainly understand the noise restrictions, the impact on neighborhoods, and quality of life. The final point I'd like to make is that when we sign these agreements, land agreements, with farmers and local landowners in your county, we know that they are making economic decisions for their families for decades to come, and we don't feel like it's fair to limit their ability to reap the benefits of a project that might be sited on their farm by limiting the amount of land that can be used. So, would appreciate your consideration of those points, and thank you for your time. My two colleagues will address several other aspects of the ordinance.
All right. What I'd like to do is hold off comments or questions until the end, and then we'll ask of all three of them.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
And I believe either Andy or Harrison flip a coin. State your name and your address.
My name is Harrison Cole. I am from 28 Woodgate Drive in Durham, North Carolina, and I'm here representing Cypress Creek Renewables as a project developer for our solar farms. And so, I didn't want to take too much of your time, but I just want to address, one quick point is the performance guarantee and the decommissioning bond that you mentioned, that's in the proposed ordinance right now. As you know, as we mentioned, that these projects are very large, and they use a lot of metal and a lot of valuable materials. And so, the only thing I really want to ask you to consider for the future ordinance is that these materials go towards that performance guarantee as salvage value. You know, one of the major materials that we use is aluminum. Aluminum has a lot of salvage value. And so, that's really just one thing I just wanted to bring up with you, and that, we know, we strive to work with our landowners to restore the land to its former use once we do decommission these projects at a future date. So, I just, one quick thing I want to add, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
My name is Andy White. I am also with First Solar. You heard earlier from my colleague Jim Martin, and I office out of Houston, Texas. And members of the planning board, Mr. Chair, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to you this evening. I wanted to address another element of the draft ordinance that's specific to the groundwater testing protocols that are currently contemplated in the draft ordinance. And what I want to discuss with you is what we've observed as First Solar, as a developer, and also as a manufacturer, what we've observed over the 20 years that we've been producing and manufacturing our solar panels and installing them in projects, what we've tested our products for, and then also what standards, to what standards we adhere for our panels. As Jim mentioned, we are an American-based company. We also have American manufacturing, and we've been, like I mentioned, we've been around for 20 years. And over the course of that period, we've manufactured 17,000 megawatts worth of panels over that period of time. And to translate that into acreage, we're talking about 125,000 acres of projects in total that we've, have our panels installed worldwide. That's about the equivalent of 200 square miles, to give you an idea of the footprint of where we've installed our panels. And we are aware of no issues when it comes to groundwater, any sort of groundwater anomalies associated with our, with our projects. So, that's what we've observed. But if it was just observation, that would not be enough for me to bring forward for your consideration. We've also extensively tested our panels as well, both in normal operating conditions and also in extreme operating conditions as well. So, we've observed and tested what happens to our panels over the life of their, of their generation capacity, and also what happens when they're smashed, broken, what happens at those points as well. And time and time again, as our testing and independent validators have indicated, that our panels continue to, are safe and operate within, within the standards, both in Europe and in the United States, the most stringent being Germany and California. And so, we continue to operate on, under those, under those standards. In fact, our panels have indicated a degree of comfort with Europeans. We've even installed our panels on the Berlin Waterworks Treatment Facilities in Germany, and they've been operating there successfully and continuously for 10 years. And then lastly, when it comes to our standards, we also adhere to the highest standards as a manufacturer as well, in addition to our testing and what we've observed. And for our, for our panels, we pass 10 internationally-recognized environmental health and safety protocols, and we also adhere to a specific EPA provision as well. While we do recycle up to 90% of our panels, should we have to dispose of our panels at the end of life and at landfill, we do meet the EPA requirements to have them landfilled, and that is a very stringent requirement as well. And I should also note, in addition to our panel components being tested thoroughly, the other element of our construction relates to concrete and steel in the ground, and so that's the other major component of our construction. So, all those components, those are the various, various elements that are part of a solar facility. And again, we haven't, we have not experienced, observed, or tested, or discovered an anomaly with regard to groundwater. And over the 20 years that we've been in, 20 years that we've been in business and manufacturing, the elements of this particular proposal are rather unique, and we have concerns about the insinuation that it implies that we would be the potential cause of such an anomaly. And also, the end component is to, there's an uncertainty if there's a noncompliance with the standards that are listed in the ordinance as well. It is uncertain about the direction, what would, what would occur. And again, monitoring groundwater, it's a free-flowing, migrating resource that doesn't respect property boundaries. And so, it's difficult to be able to pinpoint, you know, where exactly that may have occurred, as it could flow anywhere to and fro. And so, with that, I respectfully ask you to take a closer look at that provision and recommend its removal from the ordinance. And happy to answer any questions, as are my colleagues as well.
All right. Thanks, sir. Do we have any questions for any of the, any of the solar folks?
Yep, I have a few questions. I believe Harrison mentioned about, he had a conflict with the salvage value versus the, what you have to put down, more or less. I guess the logic of this would be that if you do have to put down this bond initially for 115%, then the reality of it is, if that statement you made is true about the salvage value, is that if aluminum and some of these other materials that are going to be removed from the site when it is decommissioned, you're actually going to get your money back and probably more based on your statement. Would you agree with that?
I would agree that at the, at the end of the lifespan of the project, when our contracts with whoever our offtake is expire, that it is worth us, worth for our companies to come in and decommission the sites as we do, and take up that, any of the materials that we can, and either salvage them or sell them to another counterparty that can use them for either recycling or just another use in general. We haven't currently done that yet with any of our projects, but that's the plan, and I think, you know, we're definitely willing to work with y'all to establish a decommissioning bond, but, you know, we would really, it would need to work with the salvage value as well.
Thank you for your comment.
If I may add a point, Mr. Craddock.
Yes, sir.
Back to the competitiveness and how competitive the marketplace is right now, by putting a bond in place at the very beginning of the project that penalizes us for not being able to count that salvage value, and then multiplies that by 115%, it makes us even less competitive in trying to put a project together. So, for example, if we have a project that's just over the border in Sussex County, Virginia, or if we were in a neighboring county in North Carolina, you know, that would have to weigh into the economics on a project that might be bidding to an Amazon.
Am I correct in saying, Mr. Martin, that most other areas have these bonds in effect that one must pay in order to develop a solar array?
I'm working quite a bit in Virginia right now, and it's hit and miss. There are some counties that have no bond in place, but I would generally say those are for smaller projects. As the larger projects are being built, we are seeing bonds that are required by the county, and of course, conditions to take everything back to the state that it was in. And it depends on agricultural land versus sometimes there's timberland that is used, and there are different conditions there. But in some counties, we're seeing that the bond is not required until later in the project, which of course helps with the time value of money. And certainly, we're seeing the salvage value, or at least some portion of the salvage value included in that bond.
Thank you. Mr. White, you had mentioned about water testing, and your company's been in business for 20 years. Have there been any decommissioning of any solar arrays that your company has installed within this 20-year period?
That's something I'm going to have to get back to you on, Mr. Craddock. With our, with the product that we, that we manufacture, we have created a recycling program. Let's, let me double-check with Jim. Are you aware of those?
I'm not aware of it.
Of decommissioning at this point?
I'm not aware of it.
Okay. But what we have done is developed a comprehensive recycling program that we offer to our customers in order to decommission those, those projects, because we know that the useful life of these projects are, you know, 30 to 35 years. So, it's something that we take seriously as part of our sustainability mission with First Solar, to make sure that we can decommission, that we can recycle, and that we can reclaim the value, which is what both my colleagues have described as well. But with regard to actual decommissioning, aside from, from the test projects that we have, we have done on the early-stage development, I'll have to find out if we've done a commercial-size, commercial-grade decommissioning at this stage yet. I'll have to get you back that information.
If you had to hypothesize whether you all have done that, would you hypothesize you have not?
I know that we have, we have done so on a, on a, on a testing basis, but I'm hesitant to hypothesize if we've done so on a commercial basis.
All right, thank you. Also, you had mentioned, Mr. White, about the water treatment facility in Germany. Was that a waste water treatment plant or a drinking water treatment plant?
Thank you, sir. Thank you for clarifying this. For the important distinction, it is for the drinking water facility. It's the installation itself, one is located on the filtration building, and then the other is on a, I believe, a cistern, kind of an earthen portion where, where solar panels are located on top of both facilities for potable drinking water for the municipal consumption in Berlin.
So, as far as you know, these panels are not exposed directly above open water, but they are on top of structures?
Correct. They are on structures, not directly above open water.
Okay.
But certainly on, on the grounds of the, of the waterworks.
I have one last question, and this will be for you again, Mr. White. You had mentioned about manufacturing panels. Am I correct in understanding that you mean your company does actually manufacture the panel itself from raw materials that you get from elsewhere and create the panel?
That is correct. First Solar is prime, first and foremost, a solar panel manufacturer. We have manufacturing facilities in Ohio. We also have manufacturing facilities in Southeast Asia. We also, as, as my colleague Jim Martin has described, we're also a project developer where we use the panels that we manufacture and put them into our projects as well.
And if I could just add to that, our manufacturing process is a little bit different than what you may have heard, tariffs being placed on Chinese products. It's located just out of Toledo, outside of Toledo, Ohio, because that was a significant glass manufacturing area in the United States. Our process takes a panel of glass and uses lasers to etch the electronics on the glass and slaps another panel of glass on top of it. It's more complicated than that, but that's, that's the process, and that's why we're based in the Toledo, Ohio area.
Now, as for the, Mr. White, thank you for the clarification, Mr. Martin. Mr. White, as far as the panels go, these raw materials, you mentioned Southeast Asia. I'm sure most of us here on the panel would be concerned about raw materials coming from there that don't perhaps have the same quality of materials as what you might find within the United States of America. What comments can you give us on the raw materials that are from Southeast Asia or other Asian countries that are put into your panels?
Of course. I would, I would respond in two ways. The first is our, our manufacturing controls, first and foremost, is that we have the same process, whether it be on the manufacturing line outside Toledo, or at the manufacturing line in Koluma, Malaysia. Both are the same, and both require the same, same inputs in a highly technical and highly automated and highly processed manufacturing facility, that those, the variances that are allowed are very minimal. I would also respond that, that the panels, regardless of where they're manufactured, are required to go through a number of testing requirements before installed here. As I mentioned previously, that we have 10 individual protocols that we, that we have to make sure that our panels meet, not only in the United States, but we also have requirements wherever we install our panels, whether it be Japan, Australia, or Europe. And those testing protocols are going to be the same, the same irrespective of where they're manufactured. We all have to adhere to those standards wherever they're installed.
So, the standards you're saying are more stringent in the location of its origination versus the location of its destination?
The, my understanding is that the, the regulations as to where the final destination and installation are paramount.
Thank you very much.
Mr. White, you mentioned that there had been some Mr. White, you mentioned that there had been some testing of groundwater, is that correct?
Correct. What we, in our testing of the panel that I mentioned, we have two different scenarios that we had done a study, and have third-party validators, and the basic protocol that we tested was not only water, but also soil and air as well. And what we did is we tested both the normal operation of our solar panel, and tested what happens to it over the course of a typical year, accelerating some particular weather events as well, in order to simulate sort of the accelerated weathering as well. And then, we also tested in terms of partial destruction, hit, cracking, and other compromise of the panel itself, and also tested what happened at that component. And then, again, compared the testing that we had on both these, I should say, the soil, the air, and the water coming from those panels, and tested those for the standards, in particular California and Germany, which is what served as our regulatory baseline.
Wouldn't my chance happen to have any of those documents with you, would you?
I don't, but I do have access to it. I wasn't sure where the question was going to go today, but I do make sure that I have the library available that I can provide the board, depending on what your interest is, but happy to provide those.
And, just, I mean, just out of curiosity, the list of, for the groundwater, I'm sorry, the ground monitoring, if you could tell me if any of these are components in the construction of your equipment, arsenic?
I, sir, I would respectfully, I'm not a full expert on all the constituent components, not only of our panels, or the elements that we install. But that's information that I could give back to you on.
I would be interested in finding out if any of these are included in the manufacture of the panels. You said you can get that information?
Looking through the list, list right now, of those components, as, that's something that I would have to relay back to you, on each of those components that are listed.
Okay.
The one piece that I do note, that we, that we, as First Solar, do develop and construct and manufacture our panels, I do know that item number three on that list, cadmium, is a component, constituent component of that film that Jim had described, although I should note that it's in a compound called cadmium tellurium, or telluride, rather, and that component behaves very differently than elemental cadmium. It has a melting point of approximately 2,000 degrees Fahrenheit, and also has a high stability, and is not soluble in water. So, it behaves differently from cadmium, elemental cadmium, but a different compound altogether. Want to note that, at least for the record, one component that's certainly of concern, and want to volunteer that for the committee, or, I'm sorry, for the board.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
I think perhaps only one other question, and I'm not sure to whom to ask, but when it comes to the structures themselves of the installation, Mr. Harrison had mentioned about the decommissioning of that, and it appears from my experience, from what I have seen with these arrays, is that many of the metallic structures are not always aluminum. They may perhaps be of galvanized, or some other combination of metals, that are covered with a zinc coating, and that's been a concern, and I'm sure that's one reason why the commissioners have been talking about that. If you think about, there are 2,000 solar panels, and you have to have 2,000 posts in the ground, in the ground six feet, and it can't be any larger than eight feet tall to the total structure. That's a lot of elemental zinc that could be leached into the sole just by being there, not because of an event that occurred where glass broke, and other elements within the panel leached into the sole. What's your response about zinc as a contaminant?
Yeah. You're correct that we do use galvanized steel in the posts that are driven into the ground, that we refer to as the racking to put the panels on. But we have many studies that show that the zinc does not leach off these. Galvanized steel's been used, you know, for a long time, in many agricultural uses, and it'd be the same thing as, you know, looking at peanuts in the field, that, you know, this zinc does not, that's used in those processes, does not leach into the ground. And we have many studies. I unfortunately don't have any with me today, but, you know, I'd be happy to provide the board with those at a future date.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen.
Other, all right, discussion? I, I'll start then, I guess.
Go ahead.
I'm, see if I can find it first. All right. So, I'm a little hesitant to go forward with this. We have the wind folks that have sort of explained, there's a process in place to prevent any conflict with the military bases. We also have a response from the Northwest Naval Base, indicating that there's no way for them to know if there's any conflict without knowing what the project is, where it's located, and all the particulars, and without a full study being done. I would like to see that DOD regulation before I make a decision on that. What's the timeframe, do you think you could get that to us?
Just in the microphone for the record, I can get it to you first thing tomorrow morning at the earliest, when I get back in the office.
Thank you very much. My second concern is the testing. I've read a lot about the solar farms, and I've not seen any of the documents. I've seen where groundwater has been tested, and it's been tested as safe, but I'd like to see an actual test, to see what they tested for. I'd like to see what the solar panels are made of, and, again, what would be the timeframe you could get that information to us for the testing and the manufacturing materials used in the solar panels?
Sorry, good elements of what you asked for by tomorrow, some of the other components about manufacturing processes, I don't have immediate disposal, but in, within a few days, I can retrieve those. And also, I should add, as we are one manufacturer, we would not speak for necessarily all manufacturers, so may also speak to some of my colleagues who are also, who are developers, who use other panels that aren't ours.
And you can also get that data from them?
That's something I can request, although I don't control that specific data, but want to raise that as an issue to the commission, or to the board as well.
And that could be sort of proprietary as well, by what information they may be willing to give you as far as the construction of panels.
Correct, and that's why I can't necessarily speak for them. I do also know that North Carolina State, their Clean Tech Center as well, also has a repository of information that may be useful as well on that front, with regard to other manufacturers whose information and data we obviously don't have at our disposal.
Okay. I mean, those are my two big concerns. I'd like to, I'd like to be able to see some of this documentation, and, I'm not making a motion, but, I mean, I wouldn't mind if we tabled this and had this same discussion at another meeting.
I agree.
Just to get some more information. I mean, I want to be able to make an informed decision, but I'd like to see all this information before we progress. I mean, I don't know how you guys feel about it.
I agree.
Go ahead, sir.
I have a few concerns, Mr. Chairman. I have already brought up part of those, but I'll reiterate what I had already mentioned. I do have issue with the maximum size limitation, and being able to only recombine two lots, or two parcels. That is not logical. I understand the solar array folks, and it does, it is logical. If you are going to create a solar array, you would want to have it as large as you possibly could, within the parameters that are given by law, and the rules that the county has. So, I have a concern about that. Also have a concern about the hours of operation of construction. Most construction crews, just like Mr. Martin said, they typically try to work on Saturdays, at least, having a six-day work week, which is logical. I don't see why we should limit through Monday through Friday. Most trades work on Saturdays. I can respect having Sundays off, as that's the Sabbath day.
First of all.
Also have some issues, in a sense, with having to have 30% of the land in some sort of active farmland, although that does preserve the curb appeal, so to speak, of what a solar array may have. I don't know about mandating it. I also have concerns about testing. I believe testing is a good idea in order to verify that there are no contaminants that have been emitted by a solar array and its structures. Concerned about zinc especially. And I truly believe that not including salvage value, taking away from the 150%, is definitely the way to go, because if we ask for that upfront, we're guaranteed that we have that money set aside for making sure that decommissioning actually occurs properly. At the time of decommissioning, the developer of the solar array can recoup that expense by the salvage values money.
Any other comments? I have a question for staff. So, if we do decide to table this, the suggestions that Steve, I'm sorry, Mr. Craddock came up with, can we have staff take a second look at those, and potentially, when we hear it again, we could possibly have something different?
We can take your suggestions and put them into a draft form.
Do we need to make the suggestions as part of the motion to continue, or can we just let you know that that's what we'd like you to take a look at?
I think we've, Tammy's taken copious amounts of notes here during this presentation, but I think between her notes and Ms. Elliott's minutes, we can pull out your suggestions, and maybe have two separate drafts of...
That would be a good idea.
Yeah.
Sure.
And perhaps the wind, some more information about the wind.
Yeah, I would like some more, I mean, he said he's going to give us some information as well. If we do that, make sure he gets it to you guys, so you can distribute it to the board.
And we'll pass that along as soon as we get it.
Yes, ma'am. All right, then, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that we table this discussion until the next meeting.
Second to motion.
I'm sorry. We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate your input.
Take a short recess, sir.
We have one left. You guys want to take a recess, or do you want to?
Take the recess.
All right. Let's go ahead and take a 10-minute recess. We'll be back by quarter till. We do have one, we do have one member that is MIA. Jane has decided that she's stayed as long as she can stay, and been all she can be, so she's on her way home.
And we still have a quorum.
And we still have a quorum, so we're good.
Mm-hmm.
All right, we're going to move on to, I'm trying to sort out my papers here. All right, here we go. PB 1824, Currituck County. And since we didn't get to this in the work session, and it doesn't have a name on there, I'm assuming Donna, you're going to present?
Good guess. Present.
Okay.
So, I'll speed it to the code.
Okay.
Maybe Jenny can kind of cover the maps, and Lori can cover the statistical data. Yes, Jenny can.
All right, thank you, ladies. I'd like to start with Donna, and then, we can go with Lori, and then, if we need to look at maps, we can go back over to Jenny.
Okay. We won't actually look at maps, but we can tell you about.
Oh, okay. All right, we're good.
Okay. So, as part of our obligation, being part of the National Flood Insurance Program, we have to periodically adopt our maps, and periodically change our ordinance to match the coastal model ordinance for the state. And that's what we've done with the language that you have before you. Everything that's in there, for the most part, is either current practice, or is something that we had to change. Do you want me to go through each section, or only highlight the areas that are of major importance?
Highlight, and then, if we have any questions, we can dig deeper.
Okay. So, the proposed language, as far as reestablishing any new code, the one thing I do want to point out in here, that's still up for debate, that we're discussing with the state, has to do with how we handle non-compliance penalties. Right now, our current ordinance addresses penalties through civil action. The state model ordinance wants you to do a criminal action. It's much easier for local governments to collect fines if we get to that point as a civil penalty, as opposed to criminal penalty. So, we're hoping that the state will accept that. What you have in your ordinance here provides language for criminal action, or criminal penalty.
And that, would that be for a person who intentionally violates, or something already existing?
Any violation of the ordinance that goes, that is not fixed, and brought into compliance. So, if you ignore, if you needed to submit an elevation certificate, and you completely ignored everybody, I'm not aware of us ever having an issue with a violation of an ordinance that could not be fixed. We have a couple out there that are waiting for the adoption of this ordinance, and the effective date of the maps, but I'm not aware of us having to cite someone, and it not be corrected. But if it went to that point, it would be through the court system, as opposed to...
When you cite them, does that, the first time you cite them, does that include a fine, or is that just you saying, hey, you're in?
So, the first notice of violation is, can you please fix this? And you give them so many days to fix it. If they don't fix it, then you start the...
Fine process.
Fine process. It's the, I forget what it's called, what do you call it, Jenny? The, when they, citations. Thank you. Thank you for telling me that.
Go up any time.
There's a reference in here of mean sea level in our current ordinance, that's being removed, and it will be replaced with a vertical datum of 1988. That's required. There are corrections on the FEMA forms, numbering, couple of certifications on floodproofing, one that's added. The floodproofing certification at finished construction is a new one. In Section 7.45, where flood certificates and certifications are required, that's basically a cleanup of our language, but one was added. The section dealing with substantial improvements and substantial additions, that's a reorganization, no major change there, although it looks like it's all-new language, it's truly not. We had to add language in here on how to manage tanks, that's currently handled through a technical bulletin, and that the model ordinance actually incorporates many of the technical bulletin components. Same thing with the V zones. All of that is pulled over from pretty much technical bulletins. Jenny, do you want to talk a little bit about bowl kids, any at all? I don't know if anyone's aware of what's required for V-zone certifications on bowl kids. You probably are. I don't know if anyone's aware of what's required for V zone certifications on bulkheads. You probably are. I don't know if we want to go into the details of that because there's not really any major change.
Yeah.
If you're in a V zone.
Like Donna said, some of the main changes and additions really are taking some of the FEMA technical bulletins that have been published that we rely on and making them more enforceable. I'm getting to the bulkhead page. Do you have that in front of you?
It's in the V zone section. I don't know if it's something that you want to go over at all. It appears as though it's new language, but honestly, it's like Jenny said, it's in technical bulletins and it's an application that we that's pretty much used anyway. It's on page twenty-four.
I think the reason you're asking that is because we had discussions about V zones, mainly in ocean hazard areas on the oceanfront on those lots. And the technical bulletin and the state model ordinance was suggesting that we include language to allow those bulkheads or retaining walls subject to local and state regulations with some engineering. And I was concerned about allowing bulkheads that are larger than two feet on oceanfront properties because I was afraid that there could be a potential for wave deflection and ramping and damage to adjacent buildings when you're designing basically bulkheads or retaining walls that are greater than two feet. So one of our discussions was to actually include a maximum of two feet high. And so just to be clear, this is for when the purpose of the bulkhead or retaining wall is not for shoreline protection. So it's, like, we have cases on the oceanfront where there's the dwelling and then a proposed pool, and then maybe there's a grade change and there's maybe the potential for a a small retaining wall to hold back fill or to make that grade change that makes the site more easily developable for both structures and I just feel like we need some sort of limit to the height of those retaining walls that would be allowed.
What scenario would you see where it would not be permissible? I mean, you told me the scenario where it would be. When would it not be?
If it's over two feet tall.
Meaning if you, on an oceanfront lot, if you're within, even if you meet a required camis setback, if it's really for the purpose of holding back fill, once you're building a wall that's really not designed to break away, it's designed to hold fill back, then at that point, it's really a wall that could create deflection or damage to nearby buildings.
It's a concern that locally we have with the language that's being proposed by the state.
Right, so that potentially we could, you want to go up to the fill line but not above it? Is that what you're saying?
Two feet above it.
That's what I'm saying. You can't go more than two feet above the fill line if you're holding back fill?
You're actually, in the V zone, not allowed to have more than two feet of structural fill? No.
Two feet from?
Actually, it's not supposed to be structural fill.
Two feet from high tide, two feet from what?
From grade.
So as the beach erodes and grade goes down.
Well, I mean, the.
Natural grade, got it, okay.
These retaining walls and bulkheads will meet a setback on the oceanfront. They will not be used for the purpose of shoreline protection.
I get it.
But there's a case where, let's say you want to build a wall around a pool and then have a fence on top of that wall as like being the pool fence, and that could could potentially get out of control. And what the ordinance is saying is, as long as an engineer designs it, then that's okay. But I think staff is concerned about not limiting the height of that.
Retaining wall.
Yeah.
But you still could have a fence over top of it if you put a two-foot and then a four-foot fence over top of that.
Right.
Yeah. The terminology bulkhead on the oceanfront is throwing me, though, because
Yeah.
A bulkhead has water on one side.
Retaining wall is probably a better term.
Retaining wall, so it would just be retaining.
In some areas, there are, not in Currituck County after the new maps are in place, but in some areas, there are V zones, these high hazard areas on the sound front. So that's why bulkheads are included in the FEMA technical bulletins.
One of the other elements of this is the adoption of the regulatory floodplain elevation. Currently, and that's your base flood elevation, what FEMA requires your structure to be elevated at. And then that regulatory is the freeboard, that additional foot, two-foot, three-foot, whatever a local community chooses in their ordinance. We, right now, in our ordinance, have a one-foot freeboard.
Okay.
And we'll kind of transition now into the maps and talk about the changes to the maps. And discussion on whether or not that should be changed from one foot to possibly two feet.
Is that because the BFE is going down so much?
Well, there's a lot of change that's proposed for our county. And other elements that are out there that can happen over time with what we're seeing occurring with our waterways.
Change being proposed by the state, you mean?
So these new firms, we've been talking about it for two and a half years easily?
Yes.
Yeah, that we've been talking about how they become effective. Well, they will become effective for insurance purposes December twenty-first of this year. But there are significant changes to our maps and to the V zones, velocity zones, the areas in the special flood hazard areas, and to our base flood elevations. Countywide, at the current maps, we've got over one hundred and sixty-eight thousand acres that are in the special flood hazard area. Of those, for areas that exceed a base flood elevation, a BFE greater than four feet, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand acres. And where BFE is less than or equal to four feet is just under nine thousand acres. So that's ninety-five percent of the special flood hazard area has a BFE greater than four feet. With the new maps, one hundred and sixty-three thousand acres essentially that are in the special flood hazard areas. The BFE that exceeds four feet, instead of the basically one hundred and sixty thousand acres, the current maps and new maps would be like just under four thousand, just under four thousand acres. So we're seeing a significant change with our base flood elevations. They're not to the standard that they were. And then the BFE that is less than or equal to four feet, we're basically at one hundred and sixty thousand acres. So that's ninety-eight percent of our special flood hazard area is going to be, the base flood elevation is less than or equal to four feet. Currently, the Corolla building stock, we have two thousand three hundred and twenty-three buildings in the special flood hazard area. Our new maps, only one hundred and seventy-eight will be in the special flood hazard area. So that's very, it's very significant. And we're also seeing close to a ninety percent drop, I mean, a ninety percent decrease in our V zone properties. So maybe our some of our most at-risk properties, all of a sudden, our standards, maps are changing, standards are dropping for those. So in Corolla and the off-road area, our current maps, where the BFE is greater than four feet, four thousand, four thousand and four hundred acres. And at the new maps, seven hundred and twenty-four acres with a BFE that exceeds four feet, the base flood elevation. And then you see, basically, the statistics flip-flop. So because we're seeing such a dramatic change in in our special flood hazard areas, in the area, in the total coverage, you know, staff is under the position that we would like to see that freeboard be bumped up to two feet to protect the, what's left in the special flood hazard areas. It's going to be impacting way fewer properties with that, the increase in freeboard. But it would also, as your freeboard increases, your flood insurance premiums go down. And it also impacts the county's CRS, the community rating system that we use to keep our flood. We participate in that. As a county government, we do certain things. We participated in the firms. We conserve our open space and floodways. We do certain things. And the community rating system gives us a score, and when we have a good score, our flood insurance rates go down even further. So two-foot of freeboard, we also get more points in CRS. So some of the things that we, as staff, we've kind of batted around, and then this is, it's an easy one, go from one foot to two foot. You know, I'm sure there's going to be parties out there that aren't excited about this. But I think because we've seen such a significant change in our flood maps, that maybe it's a little bit more palatable than if we'd have suggested this change with our current maps.
Better protection, reduction in their flood insurance, increased standards, but, I mean, construction standards are elevating at that additional foot is the difference.
That construction cost of theirs is not realistic, though. All of it would be closer to one point five percent. I can't imagine any of it's going to be point two-five percent to raise it up a foot. But just to make a point.
I agree with you. It's likely higher than that.
It's what I do for a living.
Yeah. Keep in mind that most of our base flood elevations are at four feet or lower. So you're talking about being at six feet above mean sea level or higher with your ground floor in relation to mean sea level. It's still pretty low.
But it's going to be a foot higher than it is now.
We would recommend that.
When was the last?
Would that be a requirement?
It would become a requirement if it's adopted by the Board of Commissioners.
Right, so when you say recommend, you're talking about, we're recommending it?
To become a requirement.
To become a requirement.
We are recommending it to you.
Yes.
Yes. That is a decision that you would need to, a recommendation that you would make to the Board of Commissioners.
Keep in mind, too, that especially in the AE flood zone, if your grade is at or above that base flood elevation, you can apply for a Loma to FEMA and be removed from the special flood hazard area. And then the freeboard doesn't apply to that property. So there's still a way around it.
When was the last time the county adopted the last FEMA firm maps?
Two thousand and five?
Two thousand and five.
So what you're saying in essence is currently, we have the one-foot freeboard. Because this has significantly dropped, you don't want properties within the county to become too low because of that lowering if we left it at one foot. So in other words, if we crank it up another foot, then we're giving a little bit of possibility of less chance of flooding.
Little, little.
Structures.
Extra protection, potential extra protection. And this would be for new development and any redevelopment. It wouldn't go back and retrofit a current house unless.
A substantial improvement.
Substantial improvements made.
Countywide?
Yes, countywide.
I mean, just in my neighborhood, that one foot would have prevented about twenty-five houses from being flooded. Yeah.
Well, the other part of that is if you raise them up a foot, then the water's got to go somewhere, so.
And another thing to remember is that we, these are, and Jenny can give more detail on this, these are very oriented to the coast. And they really don't take into account, like, the riverine and the nuisance flooding that we see on the mainland.
It's more storm surge, isn't it?
Storm surge-based, yes. Yeah, it's storm surge. It's topo-driven, and on the oceanfront, the landward extent of the V zone is actually a mapped primary frontal dune. So the toe of that primary frontal dune is where the V zone stops on the landward side.
I'd like to understand a little bit more about the rates, and I'll give you this scenario. Based on what we saw out there a moment ago, it showed that many properties are coming out of the V zone. Maybe they're going into a A or AE. Is that correct by what we just saw?
Some of those are going into an A or AE, and some of them are going into essentially an X zone. Most of the V zone properties are going to X.
Okay. If that's the case, then they won't be required to have flood insurance if they're in a X or a C zone. Is that right?
That is correct.
So how is it that if we raise this freeboard one foot, how does that lower rates? Or does that only lower rates for those who are in A or V zones?
Well, it would give us more CRS credits, the community rating system, that could have an impact on lowering your flood. Am I speaking out as? Just in the flood zones, you're correct. It would only affect rates for properties that are in the flood zone, the special flood hazard areas, that are required to have the flood insurance.
Prevent by this actually being lowered by FEMA is preventing people from having to have flood insurance in the first place because they're no longer in the V or A zone.
Right, they wouldn't be required to. That's where we need to do some education and outreach on properties that were V zone that are now X zone. You can get a preferred risk policy. The rate should be substantially lower.
Three or four hundred dollars instead of thousands.
Potentially, yeah.
If you're looking at all of those who are going to be saving because they're no longer in a flood zone, but they're no longer making claims, it would be logical to assume that eventually all of the rates would go down if paying out as many claims. Because I get lumped in with the Outer Banks for my rates.
Talk to the Department of Insurance about that.
Right, yeah.
Where did the determination of the cost to homeowner twenty dollars per month for going up to a two-foot freeboard come from?
Is that part of the mortgage or something?
Yeah, I think that would be, is factored in. We've worked with the Nature Conservancy, Laura Eddy, in helping us prepare these infographics and these, some of these statistics. And I think that's just the extra cost over a thirty-year mortgage of that increased.
Of the construction cost.
Of the construction cost, right.
I see how it's relative now.
Just to clarify with Donna, what you said at the beginning. On page twenty-seven, it discusses the criminal penalties. What were you saying about modifying that so that it's not a criminal penalty, it's a civil matter?
We are waiting on a determination from the state whether or not civil is okay.
So it's not part of this package?
It is, and your recommendation can include it as it's written. We hope to have information from the state or verification from the state that either we can eliminate the criminal or.
No, I was looking for, I didn't see any verbiage for the civil.
Civil's not in here because we're not modifying that.
Right.
This only includes language that we're modifying.
Okay.
What consists of a violation? Somebody closing in the bottom of their house and they weren't supposed to?
Correct. That would be, anything that is in violation of the flood ordinance.
Filling a floodway, something like that.
Place a habitable floor area below the regulatory floodplain elevation, not installing vents.
Just don't want you to see a single house on piles that wraps in the bottom.
Makes habitable space, right, makes habitable space of that lower area, yes.
We run into one every now and then, but usually they fix them.
I have a question for you, Ms. Volle. You've been around a long time.
AKA old.
And that's meant in a positive, rude, that's meant in a positive respect. But in your longevity here with staff and the planning department, how all? how often have you seen firm maps lower this much at one time?
I don't know that I can really tell you that. I can't really remember how that, how they've changed. Generally, you see more properties-
Added.
Added into, or the properties are added into-
It almost seems-
And elevations are raised. I want to say our last map amendment changed our, changed mean sea level? Four, or was that the one before? I don't know. I can't remember. Where we had to do a conversion of mean sea level.
So did that also occur this time where the mean sea level went up?
No, because they took that language out and replaced it with a vertical datum reference. So it avoids that conversion.
Must be easier to calculate with the other way than it is the mean sea level.
Suppose that's a known point of reference.
So in other words, what staff is saying is that even though these rates have, or these maps have lowered the base flood elevation, we shouldn't take that for granted, and we should maintain a slightly higher standard to prevent occurrences from happening with flooding. That's the bottom line, right?
Yes. And staff?
Go ahead. No, you go ahead.
And we need to do a better, we need to do a job, I mean, we need to make sure, do an education and outreach that just because you're coming out of the flood, you know, special flood hazard zone, or you're going from a V, velocity of V-zone to an X-zone, although it says your risk is lower, you're not completely out of the risk. You're still, you know, we're still in eastern North Carolina, low-lying land on the coast, you know.
Everyone's in a flood zone. It just may not be a flood hazard zone.
Right, right.
That is correct.
Does raising that to one foot to two foot, like on the mainland or something, would that make the foundation have to be permanent? Or just more fill on the lot, one or the other?
And that might depend on where it is.
Just depends on your elevation either way.
Yeah.
That might depend on where it is. If it was lowered and you're only adding a foot, maybe it was lowered more than the foot you're adding with the freeboard.
That could be too.
It really depends on elevation. I mean, hopefully people are building higher than four feet or five feet above the sea level to begin with, so it might be a matter of a little bit of fill and a regular foundation. Or you may already meet the freeboard because your ground elevation's already high enough.
It's hard to, yeah, like she was saying, it's really hard to say or apply countywide. It's an individual lot assessment, what you plan to build, what your current elevation is.
And where does the measurement occur? Is it from the average grade level of the property or the grade adjacent to the home?
Lowest adjacent grade.
The lowest adjacent grade?
That is correct.
Well, for freeboard, it's the, either, it depends, if you're in the AE zone, freeboard is the top of the finished floor or the bottom. In the V-zone, it's the bottom of the lowest horizontal structural member.
But if you're measuring-
So the bottom of the girder.
Yeah, your reference point, your lowest adjacent grade is your point of reference on your elevation certificates.
For?
Rect assessment. Oh, it's a reference point on your elevation certificates. Is that what you were asking? Because you were asking about the lowest point.
Yeah.
You answered it.
What are, what are, it's an average.
Right.
When you're looking at the elevation certificates, one of the references is the lowest, on the AE.
Sure, it's a reference, but freeboard is not to the lowest adjacent grade. It's to the top of the bottom floor or the bottom of the lowest horizontal structural member in the V-zone.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that can only be determined by a surveyor. Because you have to know what altitude the lot is, and then add the freeboard on to the BFE to know where that comes up on the house.
A surveyor.
Surveyor.
All right, thank you.
Engineer, I don't know.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? All right, entertain a motion.
Is that the full ball of wax there?
Do you, as staff, see any areas that need correction as is written right now?
Other than the criminal.
Other than the criminal.
And that's really nothing, I mean, we can't really do anything about that right now.
So let's say if we submit this as is and you get word back between now and the time the, you'll change, you'll modify it.
We will.
And then guidance on whether the planning board wants to recommend two foot of freeboard or to stay with the one foot? Or go crazy and do three foot? No, just-
Six inches.
I think we need a little bit more discussion about the two foot versus one foot.
I'm fine with that.
Which? The discussion or?
The discussion. I'm fine with either.
If we're understanding staff correctly, these elevations of the base flood elevation have gone down. And staff doesn't want us to lower them too much because if we lower it too much, then there's a greater risk of flooding by those persons who may not get flood insurance. And they won't build higher because it's at a lower elevation. If we add the additional foot to it instead of leaving it as one foot now, making it two feet, then we have less risk of flooding even though these base flood elevations have gone down.
You haven't increased a level of protection with an extra foot of freeboard for areas that are in, for development, new development or redevelopment for areas in the special flood hazard area, yes.
So this would apply if a house gets wiped out in a storm, they rebuild, they have to comply?
If they're in a special flood hazard area.
Now, how does-
Who's the AE and the A and the V zones?
How does that affect adjacent properties? Adjacent already built properties?
If it's already built.
No, no, I'm saying, how does the water runoff by the fact that you're building this lot up affect the other properties beside it?
We already have, we already have fill regulations, so the fill regulations are going to stay in place as they are.
That's what I mean. If you require another foot.
We're not requiring fill, though. We're requiring that you be at a certain elevation with your lowest horizontal structural member or the top of your bottom floor.
Higher on the-
Okay, like Shay was talking about on the mainland, about building it up or building the floor up. So you're just, to answer the questions, if you have a fill regulation and you can only go so high, to add another foot, your foundation's got to be another foot higher.
Right.
And if it's another foot higher, the displacement's going to be different.
Not so much with, not with the house itself.
But remember-
But your overall height of your house can be affected.
What it is now is going to be lowered before the freeboard gets added on.
Right, but we still have the height credit in the ordinance, up to three feet.
Like the freeboard at my house?
Yeah, but if you add a foot here, you lose it.
It's no longer a reference to sea level. It's a reference to a vertical datum of 1988.
If you're doing it to regulatory flood protection elevation, you have three feet of credit in there.
And essentially, we're seeing-
Currently.
Oops, that's not. I'm used to sitting in this chair.
Freeboard credit over the one foot?
Wait, where do you want me to go?
I'm building up the five-foot, the six-foot for freeboard.
Your RFPE, that's what you require. So it's familiar, the difference between that and really you can get up to three feet of height credit, just like-
Jenny, when you say that-
Taking the elevation from there.
BFE, we have 97% of our BFEs are now at four foot. Right.
Of current, current BFEs?
Oh, less than or equal to four feet. Less than or equal to four feet. That's like the highest base flood elevation we have on the new maps is typically at or below. The new maps is going to be, you know, at or below four feet.
Four or five feet, I think, is about what I've seen in the AE flood zone.
Wow.
And then V-zones on the ocean fronts vary from, I think, like nine feet to 11 feet.
Is it because the reference point has changed that these numbers are lower now than using the mean sea level instead of this vertical reference point?
I think it's more the model that they used to kind of create this. And I have to defer to Jenny and Donna on this, but they've done this, they've done, they've used historical storms and modeling and some storms based on historical storms, like fake storms that they've done modeling that are based on similarities to historical storms. So I don't necessarily, I don't want to discount the change from mean sea level to this vertical datum, but I think it's more into how FEMA modeled their special flood hazard areas.
Can we attribute any of this lowering of the base flood elevation to actions that have been performed by the county as far as cleaning up this excess water through stormwater rules?
It would be nice, but no, this is, because it's all basically storm surge, and it's not just-
Oh, good try.
It's not, yes, it's a good try, but it's not just Currituck County. It's, all the coastal communities are very concerned about this big change. Dare County has got their own special standard. Some of the interior Pasquah Lake, I know Elizabeth City, they're all concerned about just how much, how many properties are coming out of the flood zone that they know have a propensity to flood.
Because it doesn't take into effect wind-driven tide, flooding from that, flooding from just rainfall events. Consecutive and, right? Groundwater table. It takes, it's primarily storm surge.
I think the numbers are fantastic as far as what is coming out. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of homeowners, yeah. A lot of homeowners are going to be happy by that number.
And until they're, yeah, until they're inundated. You told me I didn't need flood insurance.
Doesn't mean you'll never flood. It just means you have less of a percentage.
It means you can get it at a better rate now.
Less percentage chance of flooding.
Still get the same flood insurance, just get it at a better rate now.
Right, yes. And that's where we need to, that's where we need to, as staff, we need to educate the public that-
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, you can still, there's still a chance, you're getting a better rate to be on the safe side.
Yeah.
You're on a coastal community.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I wouldn't do it without flood insurance. All right, two foot of freeboard.
What are y'all thinking about the two foot versus one foot?
I don't really have a problem with the two foot. I mean, what? I really would like to hear staff's opinion. I mean, would you guys prefer the two foot?
Of course.
We would support two feet.
We would support two feet. That was our recommendation.
I don't have a problem with that. Anyone else?
Is it actually raising the height or is it just keeping it where it is because of the line?
Raising what height?
In a lot of cases, it's still going to be lower than it is currently.
Is it after this bill going to be actually higher than a house built now?
No, not necessarily, because let's take the V-zone. The, all of our V-zone right now is currently VE 12. On the maps that we have now, I've not seen a 12 V-zone. I've seen 11. So in the V-zone, if you're building in the V-zone, if you're on the portion of the property that hasn't, that's not removed and is X, then it's pretty much the same elevation or less. There may be some areas along the sound, like a couple, and I can't remember where they are, but there may be some areas where the base flood did either stay the same, that like, so it did not drop, or there may be a couple situations where it increased, but it's very minimal and it's not the majority of the properties.
What's your take on it?
The way she's explaining it to me, I'm good with it.
And I understand 100% about what you guys are trying to say is that it could be a false sense of security being that these things have lowered greatly and look how many, you know, 15 times as many properties under the new maps will be equal to or less than four feet than what it was at the current rate. I can understand where you're coming from as far as people just deciding not to do it or not building at an appropriate altitude.
Altitude.
Jenny, in your opinion, does there need to be an adjustment to the fill height to take into account for that so you don't end up with ugly-looking foundations?
I don't think so. I mean, I think, I mean, on the mainland, fill's not limited to, was it three feet on the mainland? No, it's three feet on the beach. Let me take a look.
I would think you should be able to fill your lot.
Yeah, you don't want to flatter, you don't want to flatter, like you don't want those big ugly foundations
that you see in low-lying communities where they have a 10-foot tall foundation.
Right, yeah.
Right. That's, that's not going to happen.
But it's mainly because they never fill anything and they just do the foundation and let it flood halfway up it all the time. I would think you should be able to fill your lot up to the flood level, whatever flood level is.
We currently allow you to fill on the Outer Banks up to three feet, not exceeding the regulatory flood protection elevation. So I wouldn't say that we would change that. I mean, three feet, if your minimum with the freeboard, your minimum base flood elevation, if you're in the flood zone, AE 4, is going to be six feet with the two-foot freeboard. So you need to already be at at least three feet, and then you can fill three feet. That gets you to the six foot with your grade even before you go and build your foundation. So I don't, I don't think we need to change the fill regs.
Slab, that's the only way you can do it. Otherwise, it's going to have to be on pilings or something else.
Well, in that scenario, you could still have a bottom rim on a slab and house on pilings.
What I'm saying is the fill regs for the Outer Banks, which limits you to three feet of fill, should get you to the base flood elevation of that minimum six foot. Four plus two, six. So you should already be at about, hopefully your lot's already three feet above NAVD 88 or what we were referring to as mean sea level. That's a low lot, plus three feet of fill gets you to your elevation before you even start construction.
Right.
So you could fill, or you could do a foundation, and the top of your floor could be at six feet or higher. Or you could do some, both. You could do a foot of fill and then a two-foot foundation.
So you're saying that the fill amount is not counting what may be inside of a raised slab, but the fill is up to where the foundation begins. Is that correct?
Right.
So if you chose to add a two-foot filled-in raised slab, you could still do that?
Correct.
I got you. Thank you. I think that was the point you were getting to.
Yeah.
Sounds reasonable.
Any more discussions?
I'm good with it.
Now I'll go back and entertain that motion.
I'll be glad to make it for you.
I do appreciate that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve PB 1824 Currituck County flood maps and ordinance. The requested text amendment, adoption of the firm, and the FIS are consistent with the goals, policies, and objectives of the 2006 land use plan because it will conserve the flood plains and other coastal features for their natural storm protection functions and their natural resources, giving recognition to public health, safety, and welfare issues. It includes requirements for development and redevelopment within special flood hazard areas to meet standards of the NFIP and the flood damage prevention ordinance. It recognizes the potential risk to life in properties within the special flood hazard areas and the implement measures to mitigate the risk. The request is reasonable and in the public interest because it continues the county's participation in NFIP that enables property owners in participating communities to purchase insurance protection against losses from flooding, and it minimizes damage to public and private property due to flooding. And this would be- And this would be possibly changed if the staff receives notification about criminal versus civil. That might be the only part of the change and the planning board recommends a freeboard of two feet.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
In discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Move on to announcements. I have a major concern. Raise your hand if you're going to be here for the January meeting. December?
I'll be here for December.
We're going to be losing a lot of people. And with Carol ill and
We might suspend all actions.
Maybe December, I think we might, most of us be here for December, but. In general, you're still, in general, in general, he's still probably going to be on the board. I thought you said you were leaving.
No, I won't be here next month because I'm going to have surgery.
I'm sorry, I thought you made your.
I'm at, I'm at the end of my term.
I'm at the end of my term, he's leaving. I think Jane, Jane is also at the end of her term, isn't she? I think that's what she said. And then Carol, she's way past her term.
Stayed nine, ten, nine, ten months now.
Past her test, yeah.
So board of commissioners definitely need to investigate.
Either go ahead and
Or change the rules so people can stay on.
Exactly, yeah. Man, I don't mind staying, I just
I mean, I know they just, in August, they created the rule where a person can be on more than one board.
Yeah.
Only two they can be on, but I know they know it's difficult finding volunteers to come out to do what we do and other boards. So they need to get a hustle on locating other volunteers.
I believe Bob's found a replacement for me, so that shouldn't be.
Okay, so there's one.
He specifically told me this, my last meeting, so works for me.
Have they discussed extending the term limits?
Or, or discussed any new applicants? I mean, I didn't know if they discussed with you that they found some folks. I don't, okay. Any other announcements?
Hey Lori, are you able to give us an update on the land use plan, steering committee's progress and staff's progress with the land use plan?
Yeah.
Revision?
I shared with them KAMA's comments and that we're not exactly what they were, that we were working through some of their comments.
Yeah, that we are working through some of their comments. We actually spoke with Destination by Design, we got comments back to them, let them know some of KAMA's comments so that we can get a revised a revised edition, get it to KAMA, get it out to the steering committee and we start, essentially it's like a hundred-day process with KAMA to go through this and you know, we have been, you guys, how many cases have we, we've had a lot of cases over this last year. But it has been, we've been understaffed and spread thin on certain things and unfortunately that has just taken
A nervous.
Well, I mean, this happened. And unfortunately, it's kind of been pushed to the back burner. But we're on it, Jenny and I, like Jenny and I, this week, like I said, we spoke with the consultant, Destination by Design, to, to get this moving forward, so.
Thank you for all y'all's hard work. I know there's a lot that goes on in the background that, you know, the public and, and we don't see. We only see a little tip of the iceberg. Make a motion to adjourn.
No more announcements first, right? All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I mean, this is just for instance, we had, yeah, just to give you an example, we had eleven TRC cases last month, which includes major site plans and final plats and plus the cases that come to you guys, and this month we had twelve, twelve submittals. So it's not just the cases that come for you, but like major site plans that, you know, takes up staff time and then
And every one of them's controversial. There's something strange about every one of them. A lot of easy projects are done, so. Just remember that as they come forward to you, all the easy stuff's developed.
All right, I have a motion and I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. What?
Me.
Right there. Adjourn.
It's my last final act. I second the adjournment.
Thank you so much. I mean, I forgot to say that during the announcements, but really appreciate your support.
Oh.
Well, I, I thank you all. I probably shouldn't have made your announcement too, but I really appreciate working with you all. I've learned quite a bit.
You got a business card?
Absolutely.
Picked up James today?
There you go.
Oh. Next month's meeting.
Not for me.
Lori, next month's meeting. Probably have to make a motion to replace me as chair. Probably not going to be
Reappointed?
Reappointed. I got ruffled too many feathers.